Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the January 29th Special Meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Akajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Sonnadian. Here. Today's flag salute will be led by City Manager Yasmin Beers.
Please join me in reciting our pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, may we have the report?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda for the January 29th, 2019 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was postponed on Friday, January 25th, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and the Pacific Community Center Lobby, which is the location where we are meeting this evening for this special meeting of the City Council in your neighborhood.
Thank you, and since this is a special meeting, we are going to take things a little out of order. We are also starting somewhat late, actually a good forty-five minutes late, for which I apologize. We had a long, closed session meeting, and we've basically been working nonstop and came here as soon as we could. So having said that, I wanted to start today's meeting by remembering and honoring Bok Dong Grandma Kim, peace advocate and human rights activist. She was instrumental in Glendale's decision to install the Comfort Women Memorial in 2013, and for that reason, I'd like to invite my colleagues to adjourn in the memory of Grandma Kim, and would like to read short bio for Bok Dong Kim. Let me read this into the record, and then you can stand. Grandma Kim was born in 1926 in Yangsang, South Kyungsang Province, South Korea. At the age of fourteen, which was in 1940, she became a Japanese military sex slave and was taken to various countries, including China, Hong Kong, Malaysia, Indonesia, and Singapore, as Japan invaded them. In 1947, after years of internment as a sex slave, she came back home. In March of 1992, she made a public testimony and began her activism. In June of 1993, she attended and testified at the World Conference on Human Rights held by the United Nations in Vienna, Austria. In the year 2000, she attended the 2,000 Women's International War Crimes Tribunal on Japan's military sexual slavery as a plaintiff and testified using documents. March 2011, she suggested helping the victims of an earthquake and tsunami in Japan and made the first donation. In March of 2012, with the Korean Council, she established the Butterfly Fund to help the victims of sexual violence in armed conflicts. On July 30th, 2012, when the City of Glendale declared July 30th as Glendale Comfort Women Day, she attended this ceremony as an honored guest and received recognition from Congressman Mike Honda. From 2012 to 2016, she traveled to the United Nations Human Rights Council, the United States, England, Germany, Norway, and Japan numerous times to speak about the world without war and victims of sexual violence due to armed conflict. On July 30th, 2013, she attended the unveiling ceremony for the installation of the Peace Girl Statue in Glendale, California. In May of 2015, she was chosen as one of 100 heroes for la liberté de la presse, the World's Hundred Activists for Freedom of the Press by Reporters Without Borders and AFP, which I guess is Agence France Presse. On December 10, 2015, she received the Korean Human Rights Order of Civil Merit Award from the National Human Rights Commission of Korea. On September 26, 2017, she was included in the Seoul Metropolitan Government's Hall of Fame. On November 25, 2017, she received Women's Human Rights Award from the Justice and Remembrance Foundation. November 27, 2017, she donated the entirety of her award money, approximately fifteen -- fifty thousand United States dollars, to the Justice and Remembrance Foundation in order to establish Kim Bok Dong Peace Prize. The first award recipient was Achan Sylvia Obal of Uganda, who sought to raise awareness of sexual violence during wartime and support victims of wartime sexual violence around the world. On January 28, 2019, the City of Glendale issued a proclamation honoring her lifetime activism in human rights and advocacy for peace, which I will shortly read into the record. I'm going to read a quote from Grandma Kim. "I'm a victim of Japanese military sexual slavery. I fight in front of the Japanese Embassy every Wednesday demanding the restoration of our dignity and human rights. I know how much the women, victims of sexual violence in armed conflict, suffer. That is why I want to help them." As her life work indicates, she elevated awareness of the issues of Japanese military slaves internationally and was able to initiate mainstream dialogues about sexual violence in armed conflicts. The survivors of sexual violence in armed conflict areas such as Congo and Uganda address Bok Dong Kim as our hero, our mama, and our hope. The movement led by the survivors of Japanese military sexual slavery unites the victims of sexual violence in armed conflicts by spreading the movement further. Transnational Alliance Beyond Borders is a new hope for the peaceful world, preventing the recurrence of sexual violence in armed conflicts. I know my colleagues may want to say a few words, but before we do that, I would like to invite our Korean-American friends up, who are here to join us in honoring the memory of Grandma Kim. And I'll read this into the record, if you may, and then you're invited to speak as well. "City of Glendale, in memoriam, extends its deepest sympathy in the passing of our beloved Bok Dong Grandma Kim, in whose memory all members of the City Council adjourn in tribute and reverence at its meeting on Tuesday, January 29, 2019. We commend her activism in human rights issues, and most importantly, as a diligent supporter of peace. Mrs. Bok Dong Kim's promotion of peace and advocacy against all violence was truly international and will leave an indelible work in our community." Thank you.
Thank you, Honorary Mayor, Honorary Council Members. This is indeed an honorary moment for remembering Grandma Bok Dong Kim. As you read her records, her tribute, and your proclamation over her lifetime achievement, we, as Korean-Americans living in Southern California, Los Angeles, and Glendale, really do appreciate the city honoring Halmoonye Kim Bok Dong. We have here Representative Senior Vice President from Korean-American Federation, who represents million Korean-Americans in Los Angeles. We have North Los Angeles Federation, who you have encountered in the past. Then we also have President Joe from Koween, which is a Korean International Women Network, and we have President Lee from Samye Women's Association, that who advocates on behalf of a woman. And then we also have Korea Glendale Sisters Association here, and various other community leaders are here to pay tribute to Grandma Bok Dong Kim. And again, it is an honor, and I really, we all really appreciate your efforts in recognizing her achievements. Thank you.
Thank you, and we join in your mourning of Grandma Kim and extend our condolences to her family and whole Korean people. If I can ask my colleagues to perhaps join me in presenting this in memoriam certificate, and then I'm sure you'll have comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to welcome all of you, although it's so sad to see Grandma Kim gone, but today we are honoring her life and also celebrating her life, because she had the message, and the message was a message of peace. Despite the, all the hard time that she went through, her message always been positive, and it was a message of peace. And I want to read one or two quotes, if I may, Mr. Mayor. It says, "We should all work together to ensure a world without war for our future generations." Always mention the future generations. "Our country should collaborate and be unified so that our descendants won't suffer what I suffered." It's my wish that the tragedy I suffered is never to be repeated. So these are very powerful messages, and again, your story, my condolences to all of us, to all of you, and we keep her in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Jane?
Thank you to the Korean-American community for coming this evening and sharing your loss with us. Bok Dong Kim was the one who started this whole process of recognizing the comfort women issue. It was during our "Mans In Humanity To Man" event in 2011, 2012, and she was there with her grandmother. Councilman Quintero and I were at the event, and she got up and gave her poignant testimony as to what she went through. And from that point on, it just continued. She is the one responsible for everything that the City of Glendale has done in honoring the comfort women. In English, they say, "Rest in peace, may she rest in peace," and I have no doubt that she is resting in peace, knowing what an impact she had, at least in the City of Glendale and Southern California, on educating and bringing awareness to all of us on the comfort women issue. And to me, that statue of the little girl in Glendale's park is Grandma Kim, and it will always be Grandma Kim to me. She was there with us from day one, opening the statue, so she will not be forgotten, and her work will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Devine?
I know this is a huge loss to the Korean community. It's a huge loss to all of us here in Glendale. I met Grandma Kim about five years ago, and she was passionate about this issue. She was outspoken about this issue. She was in pain about this issue, and she is our heroine. Women's rights are human rights, and that's what she stood for. That sexual violence is not acceptable anytime, anywhere. Her legacy will live forever, not only in Korea, but here in Glendale. So please accept my condolences. She was loved by many and will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ogjani?
As you may know, I am a TV host and commentator. I had the opportunity to speak about Ms. Bok Dong Kim and sacrifices that she went through at age fourteen. This is a child. When I look at a child, fourteen-years-old, and I'm thinking, "God, what she went through." It's so hard to comprehend how people, they can be so rude and tough, and having to put through a fourteen-years-old through this, it's unreal and unbelievable. So my condolences to all of you, and as I said, I spoke about her before, and since you guys came by and you are present today, I will show a portion of what's going on here on TV, and will remember Ms. Bok Dong Kim, and anyway, my condolences to our Koreans, and specifically to Korean-Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for coming and sharing your state with us. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, and since we started late, and these meetings aren't as structured as the regular council meetings, I'll invite anyone who wants to speak, make comments during the three-minute period. And right now, I only have two cards that are not pegged to an agenda item, so I'm going to invite those two individuals up if they want to speak for three minutes. Otherwise, they'll have to wait until the end of the meeting and speak for five minutes, if they wish. So Umberto Ayala?
Good evening, Council Members. I'm here to speak about something that I heard about, that dockless electric scooters are coming to Glendale. I just want to give my thoughts. I'm kind of against the idea, because there's a lot of incidents of traffic, and I see that it's on the agenda, maybe it could be addressed later, but we already have a problem with people getting hit on the street while they're walking, while they're on their bicycles, and bringing electric scooters to Glendale is just gonna, wow, it's just gonna cause more problems. I mean, you know, I've been reading reports where they're already in Santa Monica, and reports of emergency physicians, and all the problems that they're seeing with young people coming into the emergency rooms. So I'm really against that. I'm really, really, really against that. And another thing is that, you know, I mean, the fire department just got a call, so they're not here, but our police officers are here. They're going to be stressed on the calls of youngsters riding on the sidewalk and not obeying the traffic laws. So that's a really big concern of mine. I don't think we need electric scooters here in the City of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. I have Carol Welling. So just to warn you, rent increase per se is not on the agenda, but affordable housing is, so I assume that's why you'll speak?
I'm going to speak down.
Sure, go ahead. Three minutes.
All right. My name is Carol Welling. I'm a property owner here and longtime resident in the city. I have some grave concerns about how this subject of rent control, rent freeze, has been handled by the city staff, and particularly the city attorney's office, under the direction and control of Mike Garcia. As many of you are aware, all attorneys are, that this includes those attorneys that are members of the bar and are members of the city government of Glendale. They are presumed to know the law. They are held to account by the state bar for all personnel under their direction and control. If any attorney delegates responsibility in legal matters to a non-attorney, then he or she acts at her peril. City Attorney Mark Garcia, for some reason, chose to delegate the vital issue of rent control, rent freeze, to a non-attorney and his staff, the Director of Housing Development and his staff. This is done with the minimum of oversight by his office. The city attorney's office and the city council, in my opinion, has violated the legal requirement of proper notice, which is a fundamental right and requirement, has violated all procedural due process, has violated all laws regarding the right to be heard, has violated the city's position on transparency, has violated the city's state laws regarding retroactive laws, has violated all state laws regarding ordinances as to form, content, and procedure. This rent control document is arbitrary and capricious on its face. It has violated the duty under the laws of professional responsibility for oversight. It has violated the duty of an attorney under the canons of professional ethics to do no harm. It has violated the right to contract between the landlord and the tenant, a tortuous right to contract to deal at arm's length. It has engaged in the threat of the theft of property rights, that is a blatant taking of property rights without proper legal notice. Here's my example. We gave more than sixty days' notice to the tenants for a rent increase to be effective December 1st. There was no objection and no complaint by the tenants. When December 1st arrived, all tenants paid the new rent increase. Then after December 1st, and approximately on December 17th, a pamphlet was received stating that there was a rent freeze. On the next rent due payment date, January 1st, all tenants copied the notice and refused to pay the new rent and wanted to revert back to the old rent. This position did not take into account the 3% increase allowed. This misunderstanding has led to an acrimonious relationship between landlord and tenant. This total mishandling by the city has caused considerable damage to landlord-tenant relationships. Our example is probably not unique, but is a clear example of the harm by retroactive notice to both landlord and tenant. A committee called Rent Justice is now seeking any and all documentation on this subject of rent control freeze by the City of Glendale. There appears to be numerous violations and an overreaching--
Ms. Welling, can we wrap it up?
Yes.
Thank you.
--by those who hold a California State Bar license, allowing them to practice in the state of California, both employees and elected officials. The Rent Justice Committee demands, I say demands, to have the current rent freeze control repealed immediately and to restore the traditional landlord-tenant relationship, which should be allowed to proceed with no governmental interference. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Welling. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to our agenda items, and before we do that, I just want to welcome everyone here to this special meeting. You know, the idea behind City Council in your neighborhood is to facilitate community involvement in city business and make sure that everyone, regardless of where they live, has an opportunity to go and witness and participate in a city council meeting in their own neighborhood, as opposed to having to come to City Hall. And I'm glad that you're all here. I wish there were more people involved, but we have, last time, we had our meeting in a very different part of the city. This time, it's in South Glendale, in South, I guess, this is southwest Glendale, and I'm glad and grateful that you've come. We're going to have some very important issues to discuss, and with that, we're going to move on to item number 1A, Library Arts and Culture Department Program Updates.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into the body of the meeting, we do have a council meeting next week, and with your and council's permission, the city manager may, would like to go over the forecast--
Certainly.
--as what's coming up. In addition to that, also in terms of housekeeping, restrooms are outside of this gymnasium, which we're utilizing as a council chambers this evening. There is also the ability to view this meeting online, although not through the traditional Glendale website until after we've uploaded it, but for those who are familiar with a service called Facebook, you can view it on Facebook Live right now, as it's happening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Beers, will you represent?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, for the agenda for the Glendale Housing Authority on February 5th, we have no business agenda items. We do have a special meeting that afternoon commencing at 3:00 PM. Two items, Director of Community Development regarding Economic Development Work Plan, as well as Director of Community Development regarding the Glendale Arts Fiscal Year 2017 18 Year End Report. That evening, for the city council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. Interim Fire Chief Amendment to the North American Security Investigations Professional Services Agreement for Pre-Employment Background Investigation Services. Interim Fire Chief, this is an authorization to purchase equipment and supplies from Zoll Medical. Interim Fire Chief, Annual Weed Abatement Program, this is for the year 2019. Police Chief, Acceptance of Grant Funds for the California Library Literacy and English Acquisition Services Program Grant. Public Works, Outreach and Analytical Consulting Services to Increase Waste Diversion in Glendale. Also under Public Works, Regarding City Clerk and Some Areas Within the First Floor. In the Women's Public Restroom, this is a renovation project that we'd like to commence. Public Works, City of Glendale Measure R Subregional Program Update. Director of Library Arts and Culture, we have a grant program and receiving of funds. Director of Community Development, this is a professional services agreement with United Records Management Technologies and Data Arc for scanning of documents and records for community development for the department itself. Under action items, we have Interim Fire Chief, this is Design Implementation Configuration and Project Management for Contract Services for Vertigo Fire Communications Center Data Network. Director of Community Development, this is also our discussion regarding the Right to Lease and Subsidy Program, which is coming back to City Council on the 4th. And we will have an adoption of ordinances. This is regarding amending certain sections of the GMC related to local election campaign regulations. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. If there are no other additional, is there an additional item, Mr. Clerk?
No, again, just a reminder that we will be back at City Hall next Tuesday at 6:00 PM for the meeting to consider the items which Madam City Manager, Ms. Beers, just read into the record. I do want to read all the items that are on this City Council in your neighborhood meeting into the record, and then after that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor. So there will be a discussion today on Library Arts and Culture Department Programs and Update, as well as the 2020 Census, followed by Community Services Parks Department Update, Traffic and Safety and Traffic Mitigation Update, and lastly, an Affordable Housing Strategy Presentation. That will be followed by the public comment portion. Thank you.
Thank you. So back to the discussion on Library Arts and Culture Department Program Updates, item 1A.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we have Gary Schaefer, Director of Library Arts and Culture, here with us this evening to give you an update. Gary?
Thank you. City Mayor and City Council Members, delighted to be here this evening to offer you an update on the Library Arts and Culture Department. First up, I want to let you all know that tomorrow afternoon, we will be celebrating a Customer Appreciation Day and tech launch at all of our locations, beginning at 4:00 PM, so please do stop by. The great technology that we've introduced over the last year is to help make our customers' lives easier, and so we want to showcase it to all of them, as well as to all of you. So we hope that you can come by again to any of our locations, starting at 4:00 PM tomorrow.
And Mr. Schaefer, your locations being our libraries?
Yes, our libraries. Thank you, sir. Next up, we are celebrating what's called a Teen Gen Fair, which stands for Glendale Empowerment Now, a name that was actually chosen by teens here in Glendale. That will be Friday, February 8th, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Central Library, in the auditorium, but throughout the library, actually, in our makerspace and other places. And there actually is a special designated area for parents who might also want to come down and talk amongst themselves. So that will be, again, Friday, February 8th, so we're excited about those two events that are forthcoming. Next up, we are launching in the next few days a new service called Homework Help Now. Homework Help Now is available from home, school, and at the library. There are grade and subject specialist tutors, basically, that-- There are grade and subject specialist tutors, basically, that a child can access. They don't actually see the tutor, nor does the tutor see the child, and the tutor does not do the homework for the child, but they get the child unstuck. So we like to say that it is a child's secret weapon and a parent's best friend. So that'll be available seven days per week, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM each day. Next up, an update on the Grand View Library. We are converting that library, as you know. This is part of a mayoral initiative, the Grand View Children's Tech Library. The grand opening is slated for April 1st. We are really transforming from a primarily adult-focused library to a primarily child-focused library, but incorporating Makerspace and technology-based learning with an emphasis on science, technology, engineering, art, and math. So it'll have what is termed a STEAM focus. Next up, I'd like to briefly talk about library collections and some initiatives that we are undertaking at the Central Library. A good library collection really meets the user where they are. It meets the user when they want it. It allows users to get popular and newsworthy items as soon as possible. It helps the community accomplish its collective goals. It is diverse and global, has great depth, and markets itself. Some of the items that we are undertaking is enhancing our Global Languages Collection with bestseller and popular books being added in Armenian, Farsi, Korean, Russian, and Spanish, as well as children's books reflecting the Glendale Unified School Districts Language Academies. Those will also be added. Next up, we are planning a move of our Global Languages Collection. As you know, it is currently next to our tech lab, and we will, actually, if you note on the map, we'll be moving it to a more prominent location within the library. So that is forthcoming. Staff is hopeful to work on that in February during some closed hours. Next, we're really looking at more displays of popular items, again, both English and foreign language, and that will be in the central kind of foyer of the Central Library, and really displaying more and more books. So we've kind of denoted it as the marketplace in the slide on the screen right now, and this will include, again, popular books that are available when you walk in the door. There they are, brand-new items usually, and they're available for checkout, again, in English and other languages. Next up is, again, these are just some of the titles that might be part of that display. It'll be multiple copies and available to check out right now at the library. We launched an initiative last month called Book to Film, and these are books that are inspired, that have inspired popular movies and television series that are available for checkout. So we recently had a display for a popular book called My Brilliant Friend, which was made into an HBO mini-series. Again, multiple copies, brand-new, available for checkout. And currently, we have two books on display, A Dog's Way Home and Passages, which is based on a popular television show. And here, we're really taking advantage of the marketing and the popularity that's out in the community. I was driving to the library the other day and passed a bus with Passages on it, and then I walked into my library, and there were brand-new copies of the book. I think the sign above says, "Don't judge a movie by its, don't judge a book by its movie." So read the book first. Next up, we have Coming Soon, and these will be items that aren't available yet, but folks will be able to put, place on what we call a hold, or it might be a reserve of a copy of that book. They can simply point their smartphone at it, if all works as planned, and be able to place a request for those items, even though we don't yet have possession of them and they are not available in the marketplace as of yet, but Coming Soon. Next up, we're planning a couple of different digital offerings. These include digital comics, which we've added some already, digital magazines, and we're actually working with a vendor to offer some digital newspapers as well. And those would be accessible not just from the library, but also from home, work, or school. Next up, we are planning some email marketing of our new items, so this would go out weekly, and it would showcase all the new books and all the new eBooks and other items that the library has acquired, and also market some of our different services. So this will be going out on a weekly basis to our customers, probably starting in late spring. All of these measures, we believe, will deliver to and inform the residents of Glendale that they have the best and most modern collection and services available in libraries today. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Mr. Schaefer, questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. It sounds like you hit the ground running, since you're fairly new at this position, so congratulations on that. Some very innovative programs here...
Thank you.
...and sound very interesting, and I'm glad that you're aiming a lot of your programs to tech, the STEM, STEAM, as you're calling it, and for teens. And that's a really good, good direction. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And a lot of these things were in the works before I came, and I also have a great staff behind me to implement all of this, so very proud of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no more questions, I'll thank you as well. You and staff, keep up the good work. It seems to be a lot happening with the libraries, and that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to the next item, the 2020 Census.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like to ask Christine Powers and company to please come to the front, and Christine Powers will give you an introduction and some foundation, and we have somebody here from the Census who will provide some information that will be very important to us as this process begins here before 2020. Ms. Powers?
Good evening, Mayor Sanonian, members of council and staff. Christine Powers from the city manager's office. Even though we have just started 2019, the Census is just around the corner, if you ask folks from the U.S. Census Bureau. So with us today, we have Mary Carmen Moran from the U.S. Census. She is a partnership specialist, here to provide you with a presentation, and then I'd be happy to follow up with kind of what Glendale has planned, and we will be bringing you more information in the future.
So good evening, here, honorary mayor, honorary city council members. Thank you for this opportunity, for this great opportunity to talk about the Census. So we are here to present information for our community and how important it is to participate and be counted on the 2020. I would like to invite to you to watch a little video, it's only two minutes video, to see how the Census Bureau is working in order to be everybody counted.
Mandated by the U.S. Constitution, America gets one chance each decade to count its population. The Census is the foundation of our representative democracy. The next census in 2020 will measure a growing and diverse nation. An undertaking like this requires years of research and testing to ensure an accurate and complete count. That's why planning is already underway to make the next census the most efficient, advanced, and effective in history. Through its ongoing research and testing, the Census Bureau has identified four key areas in which investing now will save taxpayers' money later in 2020, all without sacrificing quality or accuracy. First, past censuses have required the Census Bureau to walk literally every street in every neighborhood to note every housing unit before Census Day. Now, the Census Bureau is using the postal service, aerial imagery, and other sources to base its work on maps and addresses that reflect the absolute latest changes to communities. Second, by using information the public has already provided the government, the Census Bureau plans to further reduce the number of residence visits. For instance, reviewing administrative records will provide the data needed in cases where people do not respond, while at the same time, identify vacant housing units that otherwise would be visited by a census taker. Utilizing information like this has the potential to save up to $1.4 billion. Third, the Census Bureau is making responding more convenient by offering secure online, phone, or mail options. This will reduce the number of follow-up door-to-door interviews, the most expensive part of any census, saving an estimated $400 million in taxpayer funds. By taking advantage of the rapid changes in technology since the last census, the agency will improve how it conducts and governs operations. For example, digitally transmitting daily staff assignments and case updates will streamline on-the-ground operations and reporting structures, saving up to $2.5 billion. Finally, the 2020 Census will provide a new benchmark for all future censuses. By investing now, the nation will save billions in taxpayer dollars later and ensure a quick, easy, and safe count for every person across the United States.
So now, we are going to talk to inform why we do the Census, and of course, our goal is to count one only once and in the right place. That's why we are here, to let you know why we do the Census. We do the Census since 1790 because it's in the Constitution and is protected by Article 1, Section 2 of the USA Constitution. And it's very important because it's about representation. Every 10 years, we have the opportunity to be counted and also to get more seats in the House of Representatives. So it's very important for us to know the importance of the Census, to count everyone. And it's about, every census, state officials use the census data in order to distribute in their boundaries. That way, the cities is going to offer better services, is more for congressional representation, and is about money too, because every year, 6, 7, 75 billion annually are distributed in the nation to all cities who had an accurate count. As we see in the next slide, we can see how many seats we can, we gain, or how many we lost in the last decennial. California is still the same. We didn't lose, but we didn't gain. It's according to this Census, so we can get our goal to have more citizens or representatives. And this Census will be easier than ever, because we, thanks to the technology, will be using smartphones, tablets, and everybody can do self-response starting on March 23rd. And I would like to, colleague Michael, to explain a little bit about how the technology will be working at this point.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity to present the 2020 Census. Thank you, Mary Carmen, for introducing me. My name is Michael Corey. I'll go ahead and take from here. So the Census has made it like easier than ever to participate, which is they added the website right now, and they added 13 languages, where people can participate by logging into the website on their phone or online, and just go ahead and participate by either inserting the unique code or just by the address. Or they can call over the phone, and there's 13 languages to help them with going through the Census, the, all the questions that's available for them. Plus, there's 59 languages, there's different materials available for 59 in 59 languages that provide a lot of information about how to respond. And as Mary Carmen mentioned, it comes down to $76 billion available for California, and according to George Washington University, it comes down to $2,000 per capita, per person. And that's, that's over 10 years, which is a lot of money. From 2010 to 20, from 2000 to 2010, California, as Mary Carmen mentioned, has not gained any seats. That's another issue. The only gainer was Texas. It shows here in the chart. Okay. Yes, we are just talking about that. The data is confidential, is protected by law, it's not to be shared, and it's presented as statistical only. So we do not share any data, census data, with any other agencies. It's just for the apportionment and for the government program allocations. The focus on the hard-to-count populations, there's a lot of changes since 2010. The way people live, the housing, there's the homeless percentage that increased, there's children under five. In 2010, there are about 5% that of the children did not count, which is around 2.2 million of children under five. Those children in 10 years, they're required services, and that's not available because the parents did not count them at that time, which is very critical. There's people with disabilities, renters, foreign-born immigrants' population, farmworkers, migrant workers, native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islanders, refugees, limited English proficiency individuals. National Low Response Area, if you look at the map, LA is the hardest, hard-to-count city in the U.S. And you can see the coloration, the darker it is, the lower the response is. And you can see that LA is there. That's why it's very critical, like, for a city like Glendale, 203,000 people, it will make a major impact on the count of the census. See, this is a program called DROM, which is Response Outreach and Area Mapper. It shows you the areas, how the darker are the low response rates. And this is for Texas County, just as an example. The Complete Count Committees, this is very important to be established by the city, is an organization's work with their, organizations work with their partners to form CCCs. The goal is to promote the 2020 Census to their consistence. State and local government organizations, community-based organizations, nonprofits, social service providers, foundations, businesses, media, include ethnic and language, faith-based organization, and health organizations. This is how ideal Complete Count Committee looks like. That's an example. And the local partnership strategies, Complete Count Committees, communities, nonprofits, social services, organization outreach, faith-based communities outreach, foreign-born immigrant programs, statistics in school, media, mobile response table, trusted voices, and thank you campaign. The next step is to help generate your community's readiness for the 2020 Census, and that's where we're starting right now, which is almost a year in advance, just as an awareness, awareness program for the people to observe that the Census is coming and they participate. So we outreach to a lot of communities, faith-based groups, community-based groups, to just make them aware that the censuses are coming, so as an education program for now. Work to mobilize your community and form Complete Count Committees, which is very important. Invite Census staff, just us, to your network meetings, such as this one. Apply for Census jobs and help us to recruit diverse staff for ACOs. There's a lot of jobs promoted right now. We're talking about thousands of thousands of jobs around the U.S. There's a lot of ACOs, area census offices. The closest would be Pasadena. There's also Van Nuys, there's West Covina, there's, the Census is planning to open a lot of them, starting in March, and that's where people can apply for a lot of type of jobs, from part-time to full-time. The timeline, timeline key communications, the education phase is between 2018 and 19. Awareness phase is April 2019. Motivation phase is March through May 2020. Reminder phase, which is the follow-up, it's May through July 2020, and the thank you phase starts in July 2020. Just another dates and timelines. Okay, recruiting and staffing members for area census offices, this is very important, which is like, works on motivate a lot of individual and educate a lot about the 2020 Census, which is students who can participate, educate their families, and it's, they spread the word around the 2020 Census, which is very important. You see, summer 2018, Wave 1 ACOs, this is, some offices opened, and then more coming in, as I said, March, the first quarter of this year. And... in, as I said, March, the first quarter of this year, and more to be open later this year as well. This is some recruiting information. It's available online.
So at this opportunity, we would like to invite you, if you would like to join the census team, this is the time for you to apply or you have friends or family, because the census is hiring people from local cities, because the people who knows the community and they know how to apply for the jobs, right, there is the information. And you can find also flyers right there on the table when you leave, you can have the information and apply. Will be a temporary job, but some of them, for management or clerks, or clerks, will be starting this year to the 2020. So the most important for us right here is to let you know how important it is and to spread the voice, to talk to your communities. Please be counted, because for every person who's not counted, the city is losing a lot of money. And we need more schools, we need more senior services, we need more social services, senior centers. So the only way to get those funds is getting counted, and then the city is going to provide more, more services. So we can, we would like to leave the information for the, how to apply with the census, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask, that's why we are here.
There's plenty of jobs, we're talking about 350,000 to 400,000 around the US. It's a lot of good jobs.
Very well. Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any questions?
Yes, questions, Mayor. Do we have, from 2010 census, do we have the number as to how many families responded to the, to the report from Glendale? How many responded or how many did not respond?
Not responding.
Not, not, the, not respond, yes, we call the low response rate. There is, we can present it on a program called Rome, the one we just showed earlier. Let me see. If you can go back to.
I just want to know what percentage of the population.
Yes. We can get you this information, the accurate information for the city of Glendale, because also go by the census tract, which is by the area, specific area, tell you the low response rate based on the thing, sorry, this one like this. So this is basically, this is like San Antonio, if you can see. You can go by the census tract or you can go by the whole city of Glendale. The exact number, I'm not really familiar with, but we can get you this information, exactly what it is. But mostly, they, is divided by the census tract, because you'll see some areas are, have low response rate than the other ones.
I understand. Okay.
So if you do the overall, we'll give an average, but it's, when it zoom in, it's actually which, because it shows you the demographic of the area, how many people living there, it, it, it gives the city or the complete count committee and overall ideas like why the city did not respond as much as the other one. But anything with low response rate, 30 and up, is, it's kind of high, has to be below 30 and 30%.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Sure. Ms. Powers?
I just wanted to add to that, to some of the data that staff pulled prior to this presentation. The 2010 census identified 191,719 people, and the census identified 72,269 households. Interestingly enough, in the 20, the 2000 census, the population was about 3,000, almost 3,000 people higher, but the households were about a few hundred lower. So that kind of tells you that there was a little bit of a lower response rate, the households were identified, but the people weren't responding, but we will get you those figures.
Got it. Thank you. And how does the Census Office account for those discrepancies? You get the response and then you assume that there's the follow-up?
Follow-up the first time, second time, and then somebody will be knocking on the door, asking, or figure out why they're not responding.
And you factor in sort of a sure percentage number of people that will just not respond under any circumstances, or no, you can't account for that?
We, we actually, we, we tried two times, and then we, somebody will knock on the door, but after so many trials, there's other measures might be taken. But it's, it goes into more details about the program, what the census does, it just, we're, we're not familiar with this at this moment, but there's other program, other measures, like there's basically the last-case scenario.
I see.
Yeah, we are doing now information, but of course, where we are going close to the census, will be advertising, will be TV, newspapers, everywhere, and also, we are partnered up with community-based organizations and looking for trusting voices, because it's where the community can hear the information.
Mr. Maggiore, you have a question?
Got a couple of questions. Who is eligible to be counted?
Everybody. Everybody lives in the US.
Define live. Let's say I'm, let's say I'm visiting, I'm a student, visiting from Paris, spending the summer in LA. Do I get counted?
You have an address, you live there, as of April 1st, you will count as on the census.
Let's say I'm undocumented. Am I counted?
Absolutely. The census does not count about the status. It says statistical data for the apportionment and the money allocation. So it's not if you're documented, undocumented, legal, this legal status stuff does not really concern the census. There's other censuses done that in a different way, but this is specifically statistical, which is just to count everybody in the US.
I, I mean, my, my thoughts are, the population of Glendale did not drop from 2000 to 2010. I believe that Glendale is at least 10% under counted, and there, I think there's many reasons for that. Glendale has about 60% of our residents are living in apartments.
Correct.
And every apartment, most of them have a lease, and on that lease, there's a number of occupants that are permitted. And sometimes grandma comes to live, or there's a baby born, and someone's knocking on your door, "By the way, how many people live here?" And it's like, oh my gosh. I don't want to answer, but you keep knocking, and they say, "Well, it's only me and my wife." We're not going to count grandma, or uncle, or, or anyone else. So I think that's a problem. I think Glendale is the third-largest city in LA County. Santa Clarita somehow snuck by us, and they like to brag about a population of about 215,000 or 220,000. I think Glendale has, has been higher than that for many years. So I want Glendale to be counted as much as you do.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're saying we need to get involved with these groups, the municipal CCAs?
Yes.
And encourage people to be counted?
Yes. If the city gets involved in the CCC, that will be great, because the city will be the host, but all services around are doing their job. They are talking with the community. So that is very important, because you know, undercounted people is the renters, because they're renting a house, and they think when they receive the information, oh, this, this information belongs to the landlord.
Yeah.
So our job is to inform the community, is the people living in the house. And when we mention it about the babies, babies were born in March, and the parents say, "Oh, they don't count because it's baby." And now, this baby is 9, 10 years old, using, going to school, and using lunch tickets, using, using different social services. So the.
How about if you're pregnant?
If he's pregnant, no.
Doesn't count?
There is a, same question I got a few days ago, but if he's pregnant, the census day is April 15th, 2020. But if the baby is born on April 25th or 24th, the family can call at the census if they already respond, and they can say, "We would like to make an amendment. We need to add one member of the family." So another, another problem for people undercounted is where they are living in the address, the physical address, but there is people living in the garage or in the back. We don't have those addresses, because it's only one address. So that's why we are looking for support, because the census alone can do this. The Census Bureau is impossible to count the whole nation, but if we can, with the city help, we will be better. Working together, we can get a better, better counted.
I mean, our program is called CPEP, which is Community Partnership and Engagement Program. So we do the outreach to community faith groups and community-based groups. We just make them aware that this is what the program is for. Of course, we have a lot of questions. People's like, "Why are you asking this?" You just, you know, about the numbers. We just educate them about how this will impact everybody in the city, from medical program to housing, to schools, to crime prevention, it's all connected. So every person counts, it's $2,000 the city loses if it's, if it doesn't count themselves. So we're part of the education program, but we also need the city's help to, to engage everybody. So that's why we are ready for whenever you are to engage and reach out to as, as possible as we can, to different communities. Library would be the example. Go ahead, sir.
Maybe you alluded to what I want to ask, but I'm sorry.
Yes, please go on.
So every 10 years, you go through, completely do the counting of the population, right?
Correct.
But every year, like as you said, in 2000, year 2000, the population was 194 in Glendale, 194,000. And in 2010, was 191,000, which you said, or has been said that that's not the right count. But every year, you guys do some calculation and release information, like right now, you're saying, since you haven't done completely, last count was 2010, but last year, you said the population of Glendale is 2,000, 21,340 people, right? So in fact, every year, you look into it, right?
That is according to American Community Surveys. There is a survey, they are sending to random houses, not everyone, but that's why we counted the population, because we need to update everyone every year. So it's according to American Community Survey. That's why numbers are increasing.
There's a lot of surveys involved, I mean, the Census Bureau, it does a lot of surveys. This is the major one, every 10 years, because it's required by the Constitution. The other surveys could serve different purpose. For example, how, there's surveys that study how the American people live, what they spend on. So it's for businesses. This data, this could serve for businesses. But this is the one that done because of the Constitution every 10 years. So this is basically the number that's delivered to the president, that's to count everybody in the US. Other service could be conducted for businesses, for other purposes, but it's not the final count, which is, as this one, which is the major one that counts every single person. That's why we're trying to get the best number we can, because 10 years from now, we look at it, say, we missed out on 2.2 million children under five, and that they're looking now to get into schools, but the schools is, doesn't have the enough count, while they do have the enough count, but they, the parents decided not to.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we do have a lot of service going on. There's yearly, there's monthly, those services could be very lengthy, could be very short. They, they purpose, they serve specific purpose for what they do.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Devine?
So I, I think the bottom line for this particular part of the census is that confidentiality is, has to be stressed to all of the residents of our city, that they should tell the truth, be honest, because it's very important, and it's all confidential, strictly confidential. No one's going to know, all it is, is a number, and that's it, correct?
Correct. Statistical only.
Yes.
It's protected by law. It's Title 13, which is not to be released, not to be shared with any other agency. It's just a number.
So I, I think that's something that we definitely have to stress and. Get across to our, that's right. That's right. Very clear and concise. My second question deals with our Armenian community, and there are some glitches in, in that particular part of the census. Can you explain that to us, Christine, about the language? Show the language is off.
Councilmember, Devine, members of the city council, as it was mentioned, there are 12 languages that the, the census is translated into online, as well as there's a telephone service that folks can call, and they can go through the census questions with someone from the census, who will read them the questions and answer and record them. So those 12 languages, that, some of the languages that do represent our community include Korean and Tagalog, and Russian and Arabic. Armenian is not one of them, because they look at low English-speaking rates throughout the country, and so Armenian, when you factor in nationwide, isn't one of the languages that rises to those top 12. In comparison, 10 years ago, there were only five languages that this was translated into, so this is a good leap for the census. There are materials that the census does provide in 59 other languages, that does include Armenian and Farsi, so that will serve our community, and this is how-to videos and some instructional materials. And we here at the city of Glendale are, you know, we translate lots of materials, so that'll be part of our action plan, is translating, setting up our parks and facilities to help folks come in. So whether they're going to take it over the phone or online, we can provide those services, iPads, computers, phones. Our staff can be trained in how to help people take the census and help translate those services, so that they can, we can count as many people as possible.
And, and we also need translators in Armenian as well, well, in all the languages, and those are good jobs. Those are.
Absolutely, and we will be promoting those jobs here too, at the city of Glendale, so that our residents of Glendale will be out there helping knock on those doors, and it is reflective of our community, and they can serve our folks.
And also, part of the, the job recruitment, the census is actually looking for languages, just in Armenian as well. So I'm not sure, it's in the process of hiring people, but I'm not sure if they hire or not, I haven't met anybody yet, but I know they're in process, looking for Armenian language.
Will, will the Census Office work with the Verdugo Job Center, so we can hire locally?
They're already working with EDD, Mayor Sinanian, and our Verdugo Job Center too has that information, and we will be pushing them out. We'll put them on GTV6, we'll promote the jobs through our social media channels as well, and we'll make sure that anyone who's looking for a job in Glendale is aware of the census jobs and applies for them.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there appear to be no more questions. I want to thank you very much for coming down and giving this very important presentation. I think it, it has to be a team effort, we have to chip in and make sure that our residents are well-informed about the importance of the census and the function of the census, and they don't misinterpret it as something that it's not, and thereby opt out of participating, and that would be harmful to all of us, and really, participating in the census does not have any, any impact other than statistical information for governmental purposes.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
This is my city, I live in Glendale as well.
Oh, excellent. That's great to hear.
I'm also half Armenian, so.
There you go. Okay. We have one translator right there. Kidding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening. We'll move on to the next item, which is Community Services and Parks Department Updates.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we have a party of three kind of moving their, their way up to the front, and we will start with Gabrielle Golia, our Senior Community Services Supervisor, who will give you an update about our aquatics program. And then we will have Sevak Karapetian, I believe, go next, and he'll give us youth and family services. And after that, some information regarding senior programs and services from Maggie Cavarian, our Senior Community Services Supervisor. With that, Gabrielle.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, members of the council and staff. I'm Gabrielle Golia with the Parks Department. I'm here to talk about the aquatics program. Our program was formally developed in the year 2000 in response to the community's demand for additional summer programming. Prior to 2000, the YMCA operated the Pacific Park Pool for the community. In 2000, the department began to independently operate the original Pacific Park Pool, not the one that we have out here today, but the one that was here before this building was installed. At that same time, we also shared the use of swimming pools at Glendale and Hoover High Schools. At the conclusion of the 2000 season, the original Pacific Pool was demolished to make way for the Edison Pacific Project. Over the years, the city operated pool, the high school pools at Glendale High, Hoover High, and we added in Crescenta Valley High School Pool. And then in 2011, the city opened the new Pacific Community Pool here at this location. Although the programs at the three high schools have since been eliminated due to budget reductions, programming at the Pacific Community Pool does remain intact. And staff do continue to use Hoover High School Pool for swim team and water polo practices, even though we're not operating regular programming there. There's a little picture of our pool out here in the plaza. Unfortunately, it is covered right now for winter, so there is water in it, but it's hidden under a safety cover. The current program elements that we have in our aquatics program include recreational swim, lap swim, instructional lessons, we have some swim teams for the community, a lifeguard academy for our younger kids who want to become lifeguards one day. We offer special events, private parties, and we also operate the five wading pools in our parks. in our parks. The summer 2018 aquatics program was held between Memorial Day and the end of September in 2018. As I mentioned before, we winterize the pool in the off months. We match our programming for extended hours to the Glendale Unified School District break. And then in late August and through September, we do scale back to weekend only operations since the kids are in school. In 2018, we provided 2,777 swim lessons to youth and adults. Our classes were 99% full here at the pool. We also had a recreation swim program, which is a drop in non-scheduled or non-structured rec swim time for people to just enjoy the water. And we had 18,627 entrances into the pool, so that average is about 174 people per day at the pool. It's a very busy location. This is a chart of what we used to use at the Glendale Unified School District pools. I won't go through it square by square, but in general, you can see that at Crescenta Valley High School, we used around 6.75 hours per day and up to about 9.75 hours per day on average at Hoover High School Pool. The hours we were given at those pools depended on school programming. So we operated whenever we could at those locations when the schools were not utilizing their own pools. We do still use Hoover High School Pool. As I mentioned before, we typically use it during the summer, the Glendale Unified School Break Core Program from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. daily. We do pay a custodial fee for the use of that pool. Our 2019 permit for the use of the pool is pending at this point in time. Hoover High School has increased their girls' water polo program, which is wonderful for them, but it does mean that there's less time available for the city program. So we're getting creative with the school and we are looking at a collaboration of their water polo program with our community water polo program. And we're going to see if we can work together to utilize the pool at the same time and maybe even expand on these programs. Staff is also looking at some potential year-round programming at Pacific Pool. We're evaluating the operations for some swim lessons and recreation swim, the standards that you always see like lap swim. We are also looking at collaborating with some of the local private high schools and the college renting out the pool to them for their swim team practices to help recoup some of the fees to operate year-round. And we can also look at special events like dive-in movies and offering neat classes like scuba diving and fishing that we can't usually operate during the summer because the pool is just so packed. We're also looking at evaluating potential expansion into the back into the Glendale Unified School District pools. With Glendale High School Pool going under renovation this year, they are expanding their facility and based on what they have available, we may be able to look at expanded programming there. I'm going to skip questions until the end of all three of ours, unless anybody wants to say anything right now, but we'll give you an opportunity at the end.
It's okay. Continue on.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, members of council, city staff. My name is Sevak Karapetian, Senior Community Services Supervisor with the Community Services and Parks Department. And I'm going to go over the youth and family services section. And the youth and family services section operates here at Pacific Community Center Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. It serves youth up to 17 years of age, as well as their parents, guardians and siblings of these youth. We also serve adults 18 to 21 who are foster youth transitioning out of care or coming from to us from CalWorks, young mothers and GUSD students. The services provided to the community by this section include youth and teen outreach, information and referral services, case management, community engagement with our teen volunteer program. And programs include, under this section are included are the One Glendale After School Youth Sports Program, our SARB program, which is a collaboration with Glendale Police Department, and our teen drop-in recreation program. We outreach to the teens in our community by attending GUSD School Attendance Review Board Meetings, which are held once every two weeks, so it's a bi-monthly meeting. They're also known as SARB. It's an opportunity for us to see what kind of youth are out there, what kind of assistance they need, whether it's the youth or their family that attend those meetings, and we try to recruit from there. We also get referrals from the County of Los Angeles's probation department and they refer kids that need to do community service that are in their programs. We also are a part of the Child Welfare and Attendance Collaborative, which is also under GUSD. That is an opportunity for us to network with various community partners and we cross-refer our kids in case there's something that we could provide, they send them to us, or if there's something they provide, we can refer them out to them. And finally, program staff have been visiting various high schools and middle schools within the city within the last year or so, trying to go out there and directly connect with our youth in our high schools, in our middle schools. And it's not, what's nice about this program is if there's a volunteer that attends one of those schools, they'll join our staff in promoting our programs and activities and the services we offer. The information and referrals that we typically give out have to do with mental health, depression or anger management. We get a lot of phone calls for employment, whether it's seasonal or for summertime specifically. We get requests for gang prevention and intervention, same with drug prevention and intervention, health and wellness, education, housing and volunteering. But I must say that the vast majority of our phone calls does have to do with volunteering, whether they need to do volunteering because they're court ordered or they need to they need to do volunteering because they want to wear a medal around their neck during graduation, so for community service for school. Here's a pie chart of the types of services and how it breaks down. As you could see, 40% of the phone calls that we field are for volunteering. When it comes to case management, like I mentioned before, we get clients coming from the SARB meetings and from the county probation department. We might get clients also coming in from various school probation officers who refer their cases over to us. So we're in constant communication with our school resource officers. And when they come into our program, we put them in a program called JUST, Juvenile Ultimatum Service Training. But it's not a, it's not just an opportunity, we feel, for them to work the hours and leave. We try to ask them questions about why it is that they're in this predicament, why it is that they're coming and have to do these hours because we hold them down to the minute. And we try to have them reflect so that we could prevent this type of behavior moving forward, so they don't want to come back, not because they, it wasn't a pleasant experience, but because they were forced to and it took away from their free time.
Does the police department work with you on these restorative justice part of it?
Absolutely. Our crime impact team officers help us out. And just to go back real quick, the typical offenses that we see are curfew violations, truancies, possession of tobacco, assault, but they got into a fight in school, vandalism, graffiti, and lower level, like teen-related offenses that we typically work with. And here's the sources of referrals. Again, a big chunk of that is GUSD. And we've broken down City of Gondal with another department, so if somebody's reaching out to our colleagues in a different department, they'll send them over to us or our department, that's about 14%. So it's just a breakdown of where we get them. And you see that the numbers from higher education, universities, not so high, outside agencies, not so high. It's mainly GUSD is where we get our kids from. Next part is community engagement and tier volunteer placement. Given the fact that we're seeing a lot of phone calls for volunteering, the our section staff decided to create a tier volunteering program. And basically, we have a list of all the department scheduled special events or citywide special events where we're always called upon to provide volunteers. And basically, we list as opportunities for these kids to come and do some community service, whether they're court ordered or they want to do it for school, for that medal. And and you could see from the screen, we've included day camps, Verdugo Mountains, 10K Trail Run and Hike, National Night Out, as well as community events that take place in our community centers. A good component of the programs for youth and family services is the teen drop-in program. This is basically our calling card. This is an opportunity for these kids to come to the facility without actually, you know, getting a specific service, but now we get to know these kids. And our teen drop-in programs include our teen night out, which is held here at Pacific Community Center every other Friday night. We have teen workshops during our teen night out activities at least once a month. We have our annual teen photo contest, our summer skate park at Pacific Community Center, where we use our mobile skate, mobile skate park recreation package, as well as Maple Park drop-in, which we held weekly at Maple Park Community Center during the summer. Here's some topics that we discussed during our teen night out workshop events, from leadership and development to college scholarships, financial aid and grants, to whether or not first two years, should I go to a junior college or go to a four-year university directly and the pros and cons associated with that. We cover mental wellness, bullying, clean and healthy teeth, to financial responsibility, the importance of saving for later and not just spending your money as you earn it on the same day, so to speak. And we discuss employment opportunities as well, summer employment or seasonal employment. And that that's when we bring in Gondal Youth Alliance to do that presentation. We wanted to share all the partnerships that we have with all these various organizations within our community, Gondal Unified School District being one, Library Arts and Culture, I'd like to point out, Gondal Police Department as well, County of L.A. Probation Department. I'm just, I'm not going to go through the list, but we're also registered with L.A. County as well for their Friday Night Initiative, which is also a good source to get additional programming or services through the county. We partner with other departments as well, whether it's Library Arts and Culture or Gondal Police Department. Library Arts and Culture, after Downtown Central Library was reopened, we had an opportunity to have a teen night out activity at Central Library when it was otherwise close to the public because of a long weekend. And that gave an opportunity for the teens to really see what's available for them at Downtown Central Library. So that was a good event for the teens. They keep talking about it, want to go back because they took advantage of the sound space in the Maker Studio. We also partner with Gondal Parks and Open Space Foundation, and this year we recognized our volunteers with the most amount of volunteer hours and they sponsored them in allowing them to be a part of Gondal Dardurnay. Here, I just wanted to show a breakdown of the population we serve. As you could tell, a big chunk of that is the 13 to 18-year-old population. And then we market our programs through PHR to various flyers and social media, department Facebook page. Again, like I mentioned before, the high schools, we visit them. And back in April of 2018, we launched our My Glendale Teens Instagram account, which we basically push out teen-related activities and programming available for them. And it's not just department activities, it's all city departments that have, if they have something they'd like to advertise specifically for teens, they contribute to that account, as well as GUSD and partner agencies as well. And something coming up is our Home Energy Assistance Program. We'd like, we're going to be having an event soon. And basically, it's an opportunity for teens who are saying that, you know, there's, they might be kicked out of their home or something might be happening and they're in a financial crisis through HEAP, we might be able to provide a one-time assistance and pay for their utility bills. And also on the horizon is distribution of Metro Bus Tokens. So if there are teens that can't commute back and forth to a community service location or an event that they'd like to participate in, we felt like going out and actually giving out Metro Bus Tokens to these youth will help mobilize them. And that concludes my portion.
Yes, Mr. Karapetian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question on populations served. Is this, the numbers are per thousand like 243,000 in 1617 or is it 243 people?
Mayor Sinanian and Councilmember Karapetian, no, the number is 243 people. The number is, it's in the hundreds.
Yeah, I was wondering, and do we know what the reason is that 1718, the numbers dropped?
Again, Councilmember Karapetian, the numbers dropped because of the way we were counting these participants. Once we referred them out, we stopped counting them in 2018, 19. We didn't feel like, just because we answered the phone and said, no, we're actually not in ability to help you in any way, shape or form. So we stopped counting those numbers and staff have relooked at the way we're counting those numbers and we're trying to curtail and bring those numbers up. Just because they called us and we weren't able to provide a service or referral doesn't mean that they didn't come to us and we want to be able to capture those.
And on the age categories, from 1617 to 1718, age between 50 to 59 completely dropped out in 1718. Do we know what the?
We don't know. We don't know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, any other questions?
Council, Mayor Sinanian, Maggie still has.
Maggie has her section. Okay. Ms. Kavarian?
Do you have a question regarding youth?
Will you wait?
No.
Will you wait?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. No, no.
Mayor Sinanian, members of the city council, members of the community, I'm Maggie Cavarian with the Senior Services Programs. I'm going to go ahead and get you started on some senior facts of the city of Glendale. We are a city of 45,000 plus seniors and growing who reside in Glendale, Laker Center and Montrose. That makes up 23% of the total population of Glendale. The national average is 16%, so Glendale is way above the national average of the number of seniors. We have over 1,000 unduplicated seniors attending one or more of our four community centers. We get 500 monthly case management referrals that are walk-ins, their phone calls, and then we do outreach. We're very excited and proud to celebrate our 40th anniversary of our Senior Nutrition Program, where over 2 million meals have been served since 1979.
Ms. Kavarian, once again, what was the percentage of seniors in Glendale?
23% in Glendale.
The average was how much?
16% nationwide.
Thank you.
We have two components in senior services and programs. The first component is the senior services, which is our L.A. County Grants, which include the Senior Nutrition Program and our Supportive Services Program. The second component is our senior recreation programs, which are operating at our four community centers. I'll start with the Supportive Services Program. Our Supportive Services Program is better known as case management. It's actually intensive case management for our more, our most dire cases of seniors. And the types of referrals that come in, come in from our other departments within the city, with our three local area hospitals, our adult protective services, and out-of-state family and landlords and neighbors. Our Congregate Meals Program, which we are celebrating 40 years this year, is basically held at four, I'm sorry, at three of our community centers. That would make it the Adult Recreation Center, seven days a week, Pacific Park Community Center, right here, three days a week on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, and Spar Heights Community Center, five days a week. We serve over 45,000 meals a year and about 350 unduplicated clients enjoy a meal every day. It's an opportunity to, it's, it's an opportunity to socialize and get nutritious meal. When our seniors no longer can attend our congregate meal sites, we also offer the home-delivered meals program. And that program is really for our homebound seniors, our shut-in seniors. Our case managers go out, do an assessment at home and enroll them into the program. They must be homebound and a doctor's notice provided. Those are seven frozen meals that are delivered weekly. That includes a weekly call. It's a telephone reassurance phone call that they receive every week from our case managers. And we also have a emergency meals component to that, which is three days worth of non-perishable food items and water in case of a natural disaster or emergency. At our community centers, at our four community centers, we have an array of drop-in programs, which include billiards, line dancing, table tennis, bridge, bridge is very popular. We have our yoga classes, our Tai Chi classes, and our exercise programs. Our Congregate Meals Program transforms during the holidays into many different events that fit our holiday celebrations. And as you can see, we've got our Christmas celebration, our Easter celebration, our upcoming St. Valentine's Day presentation. During the fall months, our city of Glendale employees really step up. And in October, we host the hashtag Let's Do Lunch program, which is a real, it's a nationwide program through Meals on Wheels of America, promoting volunteer awareness. And our city of Glendale employees give up their lunch to serve a senior their lunch at one of our congregate meal sites. We do this every October and it's highly, highly popular. And in November, our city of Glendale employees also are very generous in providing And in November, our City of Glendale employees also are very generous in providing non-perishable food items. And we collect 150 bags of groceries every year for our seniors. And not only do we pass them out during the Thanksgiving food drive, we also give them out up until, I would say, about March. In December, in December, we host our Santa to a Senior Program. Our Santa to a Senior Program is in collaboration with Home Instead Senior Care of Burbank. And for 10 years now, they've been providing gifts to our seniors. And our staff, city staff, they go out and deliver those gifts to our seniors who are homebound. Month of May is in, is very special in particular. It's a very busy month for us because it is the Older Americans Month, where we come to City Council and we, we receive a proclamation declaring it Older Americans Month. As you can see on those pictures, we celebrate, we have two large celebrations. The first one is the Senior Street Fest that's held at the Artza Paseo. And we have 2017 Celebration and 2018 Celebration, as well as our annual 90-plus birthday party celebrating all seniors 90 years and older. We had many accomplishments this past year, and I wanted to bring a few of them up. In April, the City Council approved our Senior Needs Assessment. We also joined the AARP Network of Age Friendly Cities. And we formed our Senior Services Committee, which meets quarterly. And we've already had two meetings and we're hosting our third meeting in February. The Parks Department is very fortunate to be partnering with the AARP Network of Age Friendly Cities because we receive a lot of resources from National AARP that'll help us help our seniors. We continue to grow, collaborate, and learn to meet the needs of this growing aging population we serve here in Glendale. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kavarian. Any questions for Maggie?
Yes, sir. Mr. Carr-Petian? Yes, thank you. So, thank you. On the Meals on Wheels Program?
Yes.
Do they have to sign up? How do we, how do we provide the meals? And it's once a day, right?
For, for the Home Delivered Meals Program, Councilmember Carr-Petian, there are usually referrals that come in from our local area hospitals. And the reason for that is they're being discharged. It's really a temporary program. It is a free program that we offer. And the reason why we, we get referrals is because it is, it's really for the most dire and need, who really are just shut in. And we have to make sure that all the situation, their home life situation is, is in order. And that's how we go out and do that. It is seven frozen meals delivered once per week.
Once per week. And also on the Congregate Meals Program, we have three different areas, A R C, Spar Heights, and Pacific Community Center. That's once a day. Is, that's one meal per day, right?
It's one meal per day, but I'd like to, to kind of give a shout out to Glendale because it is something that I like to tout often. We're the only agency in all of L.A. County that serves meals seven days a week. So a senior can receive a meal any day of the week at the Adult Recreation Center.
And they can just walk in and receive?
It is a walk-in. Of course, they have to fill out a, a form that L.A. County provides, and they are registered probably within a week.
So they have to register and after the registration, they can come in? So you know how many meals to prepare every day?
Exactly. So they will register. We, we input their information into the L.A. County system and we add them to our roster and within a week, they'll be on the roster.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine?
I just wanted to ask about the Teen Night Out. How many, how many teens do you average in that?
Mayor Sinan and Councilmember Devine, right now, we're currently averaging about 22 teens per night when we're not having workshops. When we do have workshops, that number goes to about 28 or 29.
Is that right? And you have actually programmed with these workshops? So you have, do you stray from this list that you gave us or do you have...
That's typically the list that we follow and it's once a month type of a thing. So depending on what's going on, we will do a second workshop for that month, let's say, if we need a second one, depending on whatever's going on. If there's a hot button issue that needs to be discussed and we have a partner that's qualified to discuss that issue, we will have another one and as an additional for that event.
And how long have you been doing the restorative justice? I'm interested in that, that phase of your programming. Have you been doing that for many years or just is that a new program?
The JUST program's been around for over five or six years now, if I'm not mistaken. I'm looking at our director for confirmation. It's, it's been around, it might not have been under the JUST program. And Youth and Family Services Section has moved from one location to the other, from Cedar House to Pacific Community Center. So it's been housed at Pacific Community Center for, for the last six years now. And that's when the programs took into shape as, as you see them today.
Okay. Very good, very good. On the Meals on Wheels, do you use staff to deliver those meals or do you have volunteers that come in?
Our Home Delivered Meals Program is staff, City Glendale, city staff.
Wow, okay. I just want to say that I, all of these programs are so impressive on all three levels. And I want to thank you for, for all the work and the hours that you put in to, to bring these activities to fruition. And I know that some of us have been to the senior parties and luncheons and they, they enjoy them so much. It's just incredible. So thank you all for committing to these programs. Appreciate that. I know all the, the seniors and the youth all do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Najarian, go ahead.
I have a comment on the, let's go back to my favorite division, that's the Aquatics Program. And it's been about, I don't know, it's been about 10 years maybe since I was advocating, sometimes the only advocate for the pool. So I think the pool is a great resource for us. I know it's heavily used during the summer months. My, my one son was on the water polo team and really enjoyed the activity. I would like to look into the year-round operation, find out what the operational costs are. Find out what the operational costs are and perhaps look at possible funding sources because I know that pool would be used from 5:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. I mean, that's the way it is with the masters programs and the lap swim and the Learn to Swim, the lifeguarding, the scuba, water polo, water ballet, synchronized swimming, diving. And maybe you could work with our city manager and let us know what that, what those operational costs are. I mean, that's really the, that's the rub. It's keeping the equipment going and the chemicals and the staffing. Even though you say, "Well, we've got the pool just uncovered." I know there's still a lot of costs involved in that. But if you could let us know, maybe at some later point, we could have a discussion about expanding the service hours and months for the pool.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Najarian, as you had brought this item forward a few months ago in, in requesting to have more information come forward, we thought we'd give you an update this evening in terms of the holistic program. And then through the budget process, staff is actually working up those numbers to give you options of what that may look like and see what council's appetite is in terms of the possibility of expanding our programming that we have in place.
As well as potential revenues, I mean, most public pools, municipal pools do have some sort of payment plan. No one does it for free. Even the county pools, there's a small amount that you pay five bucks or something to get in and use it. So as long as we can see what potential revenues are also balanced against the potential expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to echo that sentiment. I think it's very important for us to make optimal use of whatever pools, pools we have...
Are they heated? Are they heated?
In the, in the winter, they would have to be heated. I think they're all heated.
I didn't know they were not. They are. Okay.
But with the, with the closure of the Y W C A's pool, not that even with the Y W C A's pool, we had sufficient, sufficient number of pools in our city. The huge demand is there, just, we just don't have enough pools. So we should do the math on this and figure out what it would take for us to keep it open. And then we'll make an educated decision on it. I remember during my Parks Commissioner days, we always discussed the visits to seniors and I'm assuming that's, that falls under Supportive Services Program, where we go and we deal with their even household issues. I think hoarding is often a dilemma and we had to deal with that periodically. Is that, is that still going on?
That is correct, Mayor Sinanian. We wanted to keep it feel-good, but it is, it's a very senior, very serious program. As a matter of fact, I'll give you a very good example. Yesterday, we received a call from Alabama where the sister of an 80-year-old who is shut in and the neighbors are worried about her. They're calling in for her. And our case manager went out today to meet with her and we're making arrangements for her to live in assisted living because she, she just can't live alone anymore. So these are the types of cases that we, we come across.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Devine, did you have something?
No.
I just want to thank our Parks Department because you do so much and so many people are served by the services that you provide. And the variety of services is so broad, as, you know, was demonstrated by the presentation. Especially the services to our children, our elderly is much appreciated because they need it the most probably. And with that, we have a card. I'd like to invite the speaker, Lazik Der Sarkisian.
Yes.
I'll bring you the microphone, sir. Is three minutes enough?
Thank you.
Mr. Der Sarkisian, is three minutes enough? Three minutes?
For me?
Three minutes sufficient time for you?
Yes, that's, yeah, thank you.
Very well, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lazik Der Sarkisian. I live at 2461 Delia Court, off the Fern Lane in Glendale for past 40 years. The main issue is the problem I'm facing with the hill behind my house. About 40-plus years ago, this hill collapsed from where you see the rain gutter and took the rain gutter down into my backyard. With going back and forth with City of Glendale, finally, the previous mayor and city councils approved to rebuild the gutter. And I really appreciate the work they, they went through over two, two months to rebuilding the gutter. I thought that's the end of the, that disaster, but I ended up with another nightmare. I started getting these rocks rolling down into my backyard. And last week, with the rain we had, a huge boulder, that's something like four feet by three feet by two feet, is right in the yard. And then you can see more rocks behind the fence and the one that hit the fence and bent. I paid $6,000 last month to rebuild the fence, just basically to keep the coyotes away from where my grandkids are playing. And I really don't know what to do with this nightmare. Imagine your kids, your grandkids are playing in the yard that you have such a monster over your head. I would greatly appreciate any help Mr. Mayor and City Councilman can give me to deal with this disaster.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we will get the gentleman's address and we have our Assistant City Manager, Rubick Olanyan, here, also our Public Works Director. He'll be able to get some information and see if there's anything we can do in, in terms of providing him with information. As I sit here, I don't know what our, our piece of this might be, but we'll definitely sit down and talk with you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, very well. Thank you, Mr. Olanyan. Thank you, Ms. Beers. That's the last speaker on this item. Thank you very much for your presentation. And we're going to move on to the next item, which is traffic safety and traffic mitigation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, no matter which, I think, neighborhood we, we go to, this is an item that continues to come up time and time again. And we asked Chief Pavolitis to give you an update on this subject as it relates to really this area. And the chief's made his way up. And with that, Chief Pavolitis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Manager Beers. I actually have an easier job this evening. But yeah, traffic safety is always a topic of concern for the community. And so this evening, we'll give you a little bit of an overview of the city and then focus in a little bit on the southern section of Glendale. And a person that I'd like to introduce, because I don't think we've ever had, given him the opportunity to make a presentation to council as of yet, is Captain Scott Bickle, who oversees our investigative services and our support services division. And so without further ado, to kind of walk you through where we are with traffic safety and some of the initiatives that are underway, I'm going to let Captain Bickle do the presentation with you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Beers, and city staff. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come out, come out tonight and talk to you about our traffic safety program that we have in Glendale. So the first slide you'll see here is our personnel that makes up our traffic bureau. I have one lieutenant, two sergeants, 16 motors, and two traffic investigators to patrol a city of 30.7 square miles. And we are the fourth-largest city in L.A. County, although I do believe we are the third-largest city in L.A. County. The first slide here is going to be the top 10 collision locations. Now, this is important for us to document and receive analysis on the locations that we need to send our directed enforcement to. We did a citywide chart here for you, so you can see 201 South Central, 22 collisions. These slides are going to contain information from January 2018 to January 22nd of 2019. So you can look at those. I'm going to focus basically on the south Glendale because that's where we're at today. And I want to give you the information so that you can go out into the community and share this. So Brandon, Colorado, Central in Colorado, Brandon Sanchez, Glendale and Wilson, Chevy Chase in Colorado, Glendale Monterey, Colorado and Pacific, Glendale and Lexington, and Chevy Chase in Glendale are the top 10 collision locations within south Glendale. Now, those are all major thoroughfares and you'll see that there's no side streets or any of those. This is where a lot of our traffic goes through the day. This is a map showing a heat map of the entire city. The red lines that you see in the top part of the slide is the 210 freeway and then you see the two going southbound, the 134 cutting through the middle of Glendale. Each year, or this last year, we had 2,334 collisions. So on the heat map here, you're going to see yellow, those depict low areas for collisions. As you can see, south Glendale is the majority of where our T C's occur. The dark purple areas or the blue areas that may show up on your slide here on the board, those are for the high collision areas. I have further maps that are going to get a little bit deeper here. So in south Glendale, if you look on this particular map, these are where the collisions occur, just in south Glendale. So we have 1,353 collisions. And again, the darker purple is where the majority of these collisions are occurring. Now, if you take a picture of this in, in your mind, and while I go through the next couple of slides, you're going to see that our directed enforcement is going to equal to these particular blue areas or purple. 34% of the collisions are a result of unsafe turning movements and speeding. Throughout the entire city, our patrol officers and the, the officers that are patrolling the streets stopped 2,000, or 26,713 automobiles. Just in the south end, they stopped 12,994. As you can see, this is also a heat map showing where those stops occur in the south Glendale area. And that matches the previous slide, which are the areas where we have most of our traffic collisions. These are traffic citations. So overall, in the city, we issue 19,714 traffic citations. Just in the south part of town, from the 134 South, we issue 9,886 citations. Again, you see the blue areas and some of the yellow highlighted areas, those are where the citations are issued, which again marry the locations that the T C's occur. So how do we get there? How do we do this? So what we do is use education, so social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor.com. And we use all those websites to push out information where we're doing traffic-related operations to educate the community. We also attend community meetings. This morning, we had coffee with the chief. If you missed it, you missed a good cup of coffee. And that gives us an opportunity to reach out to the community and talk about those safety programs. to the community and talk about those safety programs. We also issue warnings and of course citations when needed. So the next four bullet points, the Office of Traffic Safety, Quality of Life Log, Crime Analysis, Directed Enforcement Matrix are going to be on the next four slides. So the Office of Traffic Safety, each year, we apply for a grant and this year, we received four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to utilize officers on their off time. So we bring them back on overtime specifically to work these categories. So we, this particular year starts, their fiscal year is October to October. So this year, we'll be doing seventy-one OTS grant-related traffic enforcement strategies. So we'll do twenty-five speed enforcement operations, thirteen DUI saturations. That's when they get in a patrol car or on their motorcycle and they drive the entire city looking for drunk drivers. We do six bicycle pedestrian operations, four DUI checkpoints, eight traffic safety education for community forums, and two motorcycle enforcement operations. Now, two thousand sixteen is the latest statistics that the Office of Traffic Safety puts out. Glendale came in sixth out of fifty-eight comparison cities, which I think that does put us in the top ten and it's a good number for us to be at. My expectation, when the two thousand seventeen numbers come in, that we're going to be higher than that. And I, I think we're in, heading in the right direction. So this is an example of a quality of log, a quality of life log. So when a community member calls the station to lodge a complaint about traffic in their particular area, it gets logged in a form very similar to this. If you look at the, the address, that's the address that the, the complaint is coming in for. And giving an example, vehicles with loud mufflers driving at a high rate of speed and racing. On the far right-hand side, you'll see the number two, that's District Two, and that's where we are right now. So each day, the motor officers and patrol officers are given this information and they go out to try and address those issues. This is what a directed enforcement matrix looks like. So our motorcycle officers receive these daily. So when they go out to work, you'll see here on number five, so the top five intersections for this particular motorcycle officer, he's going to look at two oh one South Central, Brandon Good, which is up at the freeway, Central in Colorado, Brandon Colorado. And specifically, this was a citizen that called in to complain about the stop sign. It's at three fifty-nine West California. So they'll go out and they'll address those traffic issues for a two-hour period, maybe in the morning or afternoon. Whatever the data is telling us that those are peak times and they'll address those issues at that time. So as, as an example for a grant-funded primary collision factor enforcement, so a primary collision factor is if you get into a crash or a traffic collision, the officer has to come up with a, a reason for the collision. A lot of times, it's speed. So in this particular day, on the twenty-fifth of January, they went out and conducted an operation. They wrote a total of seventy-three citations and made two arrests. The majority of the citations were regarding speed, of course, or the stop sign, feeling to stop at a red, et cetera. As we talk about traffic calming measures, we have a great working relationship with our traffic engineering folks. And if we receive a complaint in a neighborhood, this particular one is at Lomita Avenue between Brandon and Central. We'll actually go out and do a survey. We'll send our motorcycle officers out there, patrol officers, and they'll check that area to see what type of activity is going on. Traffic engineering will also do their surveys. And if it meets the criteria, in this particular location, they put a speed bump. The same thing occurred at Elk between Central and Columbus. Same criteria is met and a speed bump was installed. We talk about aerial arterial speed management. Now, this is an exciting new device that went up on Pacific, north of Broadway, south of the one-thirty-four freeway. What this is, is a radar that shows you how fast you're going when you're driving northbound on Pacific. The exciting part of it for us is it collects that data and we're able to draw that data and find out what the peak times of speeders are. And then again, we'll put it on that directed enforcement and we'll send our motorcycle officers and patrol officers out there to address those issues. It's a very exciting new technique and tool for us. Now, I want to end with this picture. This is the last thing you want to see is being stopped by one of our motorcycle officers. But some safety tips for you is wear your safety belt, put your phone away. We had a lot of distracted driving in Glendale. Slow down, speeding and turning movements are, are two top traffic collision causes. Keep a safe distance from the vehicle in front of you. Watch out for pedestrians and bicycles. Check your blind spot. Respect yellow lights. Don't drink and die drive. And use your turning signals and look before you turn. Those are some major, these are some good clues for you. If we can get you to do all these things, we'll reduce our TCs in half. So that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I have a question. How many of these speed radar signs do we have in the city? Do we have a lot of them?
It's a new program. This is the first one that was put up on Pacific and I, we're looking at ordering some more. Yes.
So I'm here, you have six, maybe?
It looks like, I believe we have somewhere on the sixteen.
Six.
I think we have six.
Six.
And we've used them in different parts of the city over time. The most recent, they've been installed on Pacific. And as I said, the, the nice thing, and, and to give Captain Bickel and the traffic group some kudos here, is really trying to develop a data-driven approach and analytical approach to, to traffic safety, to bring our traffic collision rates down. And they've really done that. To be able to take the resources that we have and to be able to focus them, sometimes we describe as opposed to using a shotgun, but to be able to really focus it down more like a rifle and get to the areas that we need to do that. And I was, I, I would give them a little bit of kudos because as I said, for the last calendar year, we actually reduced our injury collisions by nine percent on our non-injury collisions by three percent. So the work that has been done by the men and women of the traffic bureau and our patrol bureau in focusing in on these areas has been helping us out in improving traffic safety in town.
Well, that, that's great. So are, are they movable? Like, can you put, move them around the city? Oh, you can. They're not permanent. That seems better because once you gather data on one street, then you can
Move it on.
Move it to another street and test that street as well. Excellent. Let me see, I had one other question I wanted to ask, and now I can't remember what it was.
We'll come back.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, oh, thank you. Traffic stops, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and thirteen, but the citations were nineteen thousand seven fourteen. So does this mean that there's like six thousand citations that they were stopped and the citations were not issued?
That's correct. You know, a lot of times, the officers will use that opportunity as a teaching moment for them. And so that number, that's a large amount of number, a large amount of people that went away from that traffic stop, hopefully happy that they didn't get a citation. But got that verbal warning, slow down or whatever.
That's, that's very important to know because that's almost what, one-fifth of the traffic stops. And because we, we hear so many times that we, we issue citations because we need the money or we, we benefit from the... Can you elaborate on that as to what percentage of that citation, that the fees go to the city or what percent goes to state or where? What, what happens to that?
If memory serves me correctly, we get about fifty percent of the base fine. Now, what you have to realize is that the base fine is a very small number when it comes to what you actually pay in court. The vast majority of the fine that somebody receives in court is the various penalty assessments that between the county and the state that they have added to fund the, the court system. So there, we do not make money on citations. Someone will say, well, doesn't it pay you to go out and do traffic enforcement, write tickets? No. You know, based on the cost of what it costs us to do the traffic enforcement, we do not recoup those costs through, through citations. As I said, we'll get a very, very, very small portion of it. So what we're doing with traffic enforcement has nothing to do with revenue. It has everything to do with changing driving behavior and improving traffic safety.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's a great point, I think, because there's somewhat of an urban legend out there. There's a quota out there and the police, each one has to go and issue so much, you know, so many tickets in order to fulfill the coffers. But obviously, that can't be the case because we don't, you know, the city doesn't make money or the department doesn't make money on these tickets. Tickets are purely a mechanism for improving, I guess, behavior by both pedestrians and motorists.
The only study I'm aware of was actually done in Canada and it actually shows that citations do change driving behavior for about a period of at least four months. But as I said, I think you can look at the Councilmember Garpetian brought it out. There is a group of people we do not cite. So there, you know, there are people who do get warnings. But I also want to make sure everybody goes his way. Our, part of the direction of the Police Department is an emphasis on traffic-related and traffic safety initiatives, including citations.
So you're saying three tickets a year is a healthy number?
As I said, you, you, you may see us issuing, issuing more citations and I guess while we have the opportunity, one of the things you'll notice effective January first, any car sold by a dealer has, has a temporary plate, which means about March thirtieth, everybody who bought a car prior to January first should have a license plate on that car. And so I guess I could spill the beans a little bit ahead of time. You can expect some increased enforcement in terms of making sure that we have plates on cars. You know, it's almost like the perfect type of anonymity in a modern society is deep-tinted windows so you can't see who's driving and no license plates on the car. So when someone calls to complain, they're going, well, I saw such and such a car doing this type of, you know, dangerous activity. Do you get a license plate or could you see the driver? And the answer is no and no. So you will see some stepped-up enforcement in that area because that will make, the, the change in state law is going to make our efforts more effective.
Of course. Yes, Mr. Jerry?
Thanks, Chief. Along, along those lines, boy, I would urge a zero tolerance on that. I mean, someone driving around with no plates is up to no good. Whether he's, whether it's just a tax cheat to cheat the DMV or he's running around and doing mischievous things with the hope no one can identify his car with an easy plate number, I'd say go after him full, full force. And I hope folks that are listening out there realize that if you don't have a plate, you are going to be stopped, you are going to be ticketed, you are going to have DMV penalties and late fees at the very least to deal with.
I, I will tell you, our experience has been that a lot of the cars that we stop with no plates, you'll find the plates in the trunk. They just have not been put on the car. The challenge for us, based on current law, is that temporary registration up in the right front window is hard to see. And, you know, I'm sure you'll be shocked to know that some people just put a piece of paper up there. But we have to work within certain legal frameworks. And as I said, this change in state law is very good for us because now every vehicle will either have a regular plate or a temporary plate. And so, as I said, you will see stepped-up enforcement on the, on the cars with no plates.
So Chief, the, the numbers that Councilman Garpetian alluded to, the twenty-six thousand stops, only nineteen thousand tickets, can you tell the viewing audience, what, what sort of things, what sort of factors do you take into account when deciding not to ticket someone?
As I said.
You know, I mean, is it, does a, does a polite attitude help? Does a GPOA sticker on the window help?
Tears.
Having your license and registration ready, having your hands on the wheel, windows down, just admitting, admitting fault, yeah, I was speeding, I'm having a bad day. Come on, I mean.
I, I will tell you, there is.
You want a safer driving.
There, there is no one-hundred percent guarantee on anything. And I'm going to tell you, one of the things that's going to play into any officer's thing is, as we look at these issues, if you are in an area where we are conducting enhanced enforcement because we have a particular problem, then you are more likely to get a citation than not. I will say that, you know what, honesty is sometimes refreshing because so often we ask, you know, do you know why we stopped you or that type of stuff? And you get the answer, or my favorite is how fast were you going? And the answer is not how fast they were going. I was doing fifty-five. We'll try eighty-five. Is, is a little bit different. And so sometimes when somebody is honest, that, that might get, because what we're really after is the officer is making an assessment of what is it going to take to correct your driving behavior? And so if in that conversation, they think a warning will correct your driving behavior, they will issue the warning. If they think it's necessary to issue a citation, they're going to issue a citation. And every officer has a level of discretion in doing that.
You know, I was informed by a motor officer not too long ago that one of the people he had stopped for speeding insisted that he was a good friend of me.
Did that help?
I told my son to pay the ticket and just to, and just to put it to bed.
You, you, you aren't the only one who says that they're good friends.
Yes, Mr. Agajani?
I lived in Glendale almost for forty years. No officer stopped me and did not give me a ticket.
Do you drive?
All the time I received a ticket. Nobody said, oh, we are not going to give ticket this time, but be careful. I never heard of that. This is new to me that you guys are doing that. But however, my question is on this directed enforcement matrix. How this, how you compile this information again? I don't know if you want to show? Yeah.
Sure.
You said every morning, the officers, they will get this information, right?
Yes. So the traffic enforcement supervisors, they compile the data that we receive from our crime analysis. They also take the complaints from the community and they'll put it on a.
From day before or this is for a week?
So we usually get the data once a month from our crime analysis. There are times when they'll work closely with them and they'll ask for specific information. They'll then use that information to plug it into the directed enforcement matrix. So like, for instance, the top one here where it says three fifty-nine West California, a stop sign. So that was from a citizen who called in to complain about that particular stop sign. So we put it on this matrix for them to go out and do the enforcement activities on that particular stop sign. The rest of it you'll see here, that's from the data obtained from our crime analysis that shows that those are top intersections for collisions. And we'll go out and address those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty good.
Thank you. You have one more question?
Okay, well, I, I wanted to ask about the traffic officers. How many of them do we have? And how many are out on the streets at one time?
So we have sixteen assigned to traffic. We currently have, we're down three. We have some staffing issues we're dealing with. A couple of them are out on injury. So we have eleven motor officers that go out and drive their motorcycles in the city throughout the week. They're broken up in half, so some come in Monday through Thursday, some come in Tuesday through Friday. We use the grant-funded money to bring them out on the weekends and address some of these issues. So at one time, you may have five, but on Wednesdays, when they're all there, you'll get eleven of them out there.
Wednesdays, Wednesday's eleven, so be careful out there on Wednesdays. And other days, five?
Yes. Yes, in addition to our patrol officers. So you can have anywhere from twenty-five, sometimes thirty, police officers out in the field at once during the day. That includes our special enforcement detail, traffic patrol officers, our crime impact team, private officers. So during the daytime is when the most of our activity goes on.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll convey that about ten years ago, I was pulled over in, in Montrose. I was bringing my daughter home from swimming lesson. And I was going a little too fast and I was pulled over and the, the police officer told me what the issue was and I apologized and he said, just on your way. That was it. So it does happen. Our, our police officers are human beings. They're, they exercise their judgment.
And that's the best feeling in the world.
That is the best. That's incredible, incredible.
Yes, yeah. And, and here, I've been pulled over twice and I've gotten two tickets. So now I say, what, what am I doing wrong?
You didn't smile, no. But having said that, there's, you know, we, we hear a lot that Glendale drivers are the worst on the planet and insurance rates are the worst on the planet. And I'm looking at the collision self, so we have some numbers here, some, some numbers that are absolute numbers for, for one-year period. Do we have statistical information that would allow us to compare ourselves to other municipalities or other cities' drivers? I don't know, based on, based on population, based on square mileage, is there a way to do a fair comparison? And, and really conclude whether our drivers are the worst drivers or they're not bad enough or they're great drivers? What's, is that an answer?
I think the OTS on the bottom here where it says two thousand sixteen composite store, I think those, those are exciting numbers for us. How this is calculated, they, they calculate cities compatible to us. So between a hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand of population, so there's fifty-eight cities that are grouped with us. We came out six out of fifty-eight cities. And so it puts us in the top ten. I think those are great numbers.
Six best?
Six best.
Six best?
Yes. And so that's in California, not across the country, but California. I, I think those are very encouraging. I can tell you, I, I commit to you tonight that that number is going to go higher because I, with the strategies that we're using, we're going to make it safer and, and better next year.
So these assertions are baseless. These assertions often have, by the way, like an ethnic racial undertone to them. So I want them an ethnic racial undertone to them. So I want them to hear this, that it's far from truth, far from the truth that our drivers are the worst drivers and...
Mayor, I'm very sorry for saying that Allstate did not look at this issue the same way that we are describing here. They have compared cities, and we were in bottom of the list. Among 200 cities, we were 194th, 200 being worst.
Okay.
So I'm saying, I don't know how we do this calculation. Maybe we have to ask the insurance company and clear this issue, that you consider ourselves among 88 cities, eight being the best from top, one being the best. And they are saying we are the worst.
Okay, so let me finish what I was saying.
I'm sorry.
I couldn't care less what Allstate says. I have my police chief here and one of our captains here, and he's saying that we're not. And he's basing it on statistical information. Allstate is a commercial entity. They do whatever calculations or whatever commercial motivations that they have. I'm asking if Glendale drivers are the unsafest, the worst. I mean, these kind of assertions that you hear all the time, it's on social media, it's on Nextdoor all the time. And I heard a pretty conclusive answer, based on numbers, that that is far from the truth. Allstate can say whatever they want.
But I was, I'm sorry, Mayor. What I was trying to say is, if there is, Allstate is reputable company. What I was trying to say, not disputing what their information is, we better get in touch with them, look at their information, and look at the way they are looking at these issues to learn something from it. I'm not challenging State Farm, or our officers, or our police chief, or deputy chief. I'm just trying to learn something that will be beneficial to our residents.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
One more thing I wanted to mention was, out of that 26,000 stops, bear in mind that during the working hours, we have almost, if I'm not mistaken, 50,000 people who come to Glendale to work every day. I bet you anything that some of that citations are people from, who don't live in Glendale but work in Glendale.
I can give you an educated guess. I've done the analysis a couple of times. About half the citations that we write occur from inside, occur to residents, and the other half are people that are visiting. And I've done that two or three times in the career, plus or minus five points.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you. We have some speakers on this item, and I'd like to invite them up, or rather, they'll approach you with the microphones. Tony Passarella, followed by Greg Shields. Three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Tony Passarella. This is not like scooters. This is basically a cell job. It's a con job by the Silicon Valley. There's hundreds of millions of dollars poured into these companies. And the spin is that they're green, and these terms, micromobility, I mean, who thinks about these terms? Micromobility, last mile. I mean, you can't walk a mile. It's really nonsense, as far as I'm concerned. It's, they're putting profits before safety. And when that gets introduced in the spring, and you guys vote to put them on the street in the pilot program, and I know you will, you're also putting profits before safety. Listen, they're not a legitimate form of transportation. Yeah, you hop on it, you can transport yourself from one area to the other. But they're not a legitimate form of transportation. I see these as a high-end toy, riding in the LA River Bike Path, for example, or around the loop at the Rose Bowl, and a helmet is a must. They're going to be, they're already here, as a matter of fact. Driving down Pacific, I saw one, Pacific and Milford, it's blocking the sidewalk right by one of those ramps that you built for the wheelchair people. I saw one in the strip mall on Pacific and Broadway, in the handicap zone. I saw one on San Fernando Road, they're coming from Atwater, by the way, San Fernando Road and Pelliccone with the wheel off. So they're already here, basically. And what about, you know, you talk about the seniors, what a great program for the seniors, and meals, and all that we do here. I worked in this building right here for 13 years as a basketball instructor, and I see what good that we do here in the Parks Department. But, so now what we're going to do is, we're going to put those same seniors that we help, we're going to put those people at risk, the blind people, the people that walk around with canes, that have the wheelchairs, they're going to have to maneuver around these. They're going to be scattered everywhere. The downtown is going to be littered with these scooters. Americana and the Glendale Gallery around that area is going to be an absolute nightmare. There was a study, the first of its kind, just done, the report came out, I think it was last week, or no, Saturday, LA Times picked it up, and basically every news organization in the country picked it up. UCLA Medical Center, Westwood in Santa Monica, did a report, a report on injuries, 249 injuries from the summer of 17 to the summer of 18. Forty percent of those injuries were head-related trauma, trauma. And 80%, they fall off the scooter. So this is a very, very serious problem, and they have no place in Glendale. If you vote this in come the spring, Garpetian is the only one that really gets this. He's concerned. The rest of you, I just don't know. Mr. Agaganyan, I know you're concerned about the lawsuits. And trust me, with these streets...
Your time is...
Time's been up for a while.
Yeah, well, you let other people go a little bit longer, so I'm going to go...
I'm just asking you to wrap it up.
Listen, Mr., listen, you shut me off twice in a row on this one. Twice in a row, you shut me down.
I'm not shutting you down, I'm asking you to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. So that's the problem. It's lawsuits. You know, yeah, the downtown is nicely paved. Everything is nice and pretty and fancy for the guests here. But you even go, even in North Glendale, the roads got cracks in them, they got potholes in them. And Mr. Agaganyan, the lawsuits are coming, and the $100,000 to $300,000 that the Bird rep said that there's going to be revenue sharing for the city, that's going to be nothing in the lawsuits you're going to have to pay.
Thank you, Mr. Passarella. Next speaker is Greg Shields, followed by Courtney Morris.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay with this?
We can.
All right, great. I'd like to address a couple of things. I made some Crip notes here, but something that you said, Mayor, had to do with Glendale drivers being known as the worst at one period of time, whether that was tongue-in-cheek or not, I'm not sure. But I have to piggyback on something that Mr. Passarella was saying about the electric scooters. I traveled from Alcadia into LA, Santa Monica. Look at the head injuries. When you do your cost-benefit analysis for this program, please make sure you include the other cities that have employed it and the results that they've had. Not just the positive ones, but the medical ones. You're going to basically, not endanger, but tie up the timeframe, time of our law enforcement, Glendale Police Department, as well as our Fire Department as well, to handle emergencies that happen on these little devices. They're scattered around in other cities, and they pretty much are a hazard. Glendale has been a fantastic city. It's always been known as a bedroom community. It was smaller then. It's grown hugely now. But the quality of life was more important than the toys that we're playing with. So I've asked you to consider the quality of life of the residents of Glendale, regardless of age, versus having the next newest toy on the street to compete with cities like Santa Clarita, Arcadia, Santa Monica, and to look like they do. Glendale is not like that. I can tell you, when I moved to Glendale, things were a lot worse, completely a lot worse, a lot different, especially for people that look like me. But the problem now is not that. The problem now is the quality of life. Preserve that in your thinking and in your decision-making. Do that cost-benefit analysis, see exactly where it is and where it goes. I think you'd be surprised. It may not be something you want to deal with, to have medical injuries of the tide, to have to continue now. So that's all I had to say, but consider doing that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Courtney Morris?
Hi. Oh, God. My name is Courtney Morris. I'm a South Glendale resident. I actually just wanted to bring something to the officer's attention. I was leaving the Gold's Gym this morning while working on my New Year's resolution, and the trucks that park across from Central at the gallery loading dock block the traffic signal when they're parked there unloading. So I actually almost pulled out into the intersection this morning, because I thought the traffic light was out. But they just, the trucks actually go up high enough that they block the traffic signal. I brought it to the Americana, or the gallery's attention, but I wasn't. Maybe you can add it to the list of places to go check out? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. And that's the last speaker on this item. Unless my colleagues have any more comments or questions.
Comments I have. Actually, I want to say to our city attorney, apparently Bird, this new company who rents the motorcycles, scooters, I was told that they're not responsible. If somebody drives that scooter and gets in an accident, they are not responsible for it. Can you look into it?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Agaganyan, we are looking at those liability issues and how the different cities have dealt with them so far, that have enacted a program. And when that items comes back, we'll explain how that works and what our recommendation is in terms of liability. Obviously, from our perspective, we're going to be recommending that the provider provide any, all the indemnity and insurance that is necessary to protect the city's interests. But we'll explain how the liability runs, what immunity the city has, and the risk shifting over to the provider for those services.
But I just specifically want you to look into it, because like Hertz car, Hertz rent car, I mean, they have insurance. They sell you like $300,000, $100,000 a plan. But they have like $10 million insurance themselves, because if you pass that limit, Hertz is responsible to the other party. But apparently Bird is not responsible to anybody.
Well, we'll provide that information to you.
Thank you.
And bikes, too. If you're looking at that issue, because Metro is trying to place bicycles, I'm not sure if this, how the speakers feel about bicycles. But bicycles are, we're trying hard to get the docked bikes at the train station and other locations. Again, same issues that Councilmember Agaganyan brought up. Let's sort of see where we lie with those.
Because I don't want to see we eventually responsible for the mayor.
So look into that, whether municipalities are ultimately responsible for any liability that arises from the use of the, both the bicycles and the scooters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, Captain Bechel, thank you very much. And we'll move on to the last item on, well, item 1E, which is affordable housing strategy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Philip Landsafame from Community Development, Community Service, good lord. What department are you from, Phil? Community Development, it's late, it's been a long day, I apologize, is going to give you an update on the affordable housing strategy, and a lot of items that you as council have implemented in the last few years, but also give you a historical perspective in terms of what councils of the past, as well as this council, has done. With that, Phil.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, it has been just over a year since you adopted your affordable housing strategy.
Is your mic on?
Your mic on.
Mr. Mayor, it's been about a year since you adopted your affordable housing strategy. So we thought a good time to come back and update you on what is happening. Although it is very difficult to produce affordable housing in California, there are several different methods and several different strategies, programs, that can be used to achieve this. Just to look back at Glendale's production history, we have assisted almost 4,500 total units. That includes our Section 8 program, our new construction density bonus units. And what it does not include is some of the former redevelopment programs, first-time homebuyer programs, rehab loan programs, Life Wrap, which was a rental assistance that was coupled with education, Vet Wrap, a similar program for veterans. All told, the Housing Authority and City Council have spent over $100 million. We've been able to leverage another $200 million with those funds. This is affecting about 6% of our population. We can always do more, and that's what the housing strategy was about. How can we adopt certain strategies to help us increase the number of affordable housing units? As I said, it was adopted in December 2017. The plan was really based on three prongs: land use tools, dedicated revenue to affordable housing, and then a legislative platform. Some of the highlights of things that you as a City Council and Housing Authority have achieved in the last year, you have created an inclusionary housing ordinance, zoning ordinance. That is coming back to you April, probably late April, early May. Along with that is an INLO fee that would create a revenue stream for development of affordable housing. You have committed significant funds for affordable housing. We have two projects underway right now, and you have also directed staff to be looking for additional properties. ADUs in the South Glendale Community Plan, both land use tools that we are developing. We are working with our federal and state legislators to put forward a legislative platform that you have identified. And then finally, the development of a proposed right-to-lease, right rent review program. That will be coming back to you next week. To go through some of the, each of the prongs and highlight some of the areas, as I mentioned just a minute ago, rent resolution program, that's the right-to-lease, rent mediation and relocation assistance. That ordinance has been, that draft ordinance has been circulated. It is on our website and our rent page. And so that will be coming back to you with staff's analysis next week. Section 8 protection, this is a couple of things to mention on this. Staff has been following the shutdown very closely. And I'm pleased to say that while we're out of a shutdown, we believe, we've been told, that the months of March and April will be funded and loaded into the system, so that if there is a shutdown, we will be, we'll still be able to make our Section 8 payments for those two months. We have about six weeks of reserve, should it go on even longer than that. Fingers crossed that we don't go through that again. But staff watches what's happening in Washington very, very closely. The other thing I wanted to mention about this is, staff has worked very hard to try and get more vouchers. That was the direction the council gave. And while those have been very difficult to come by, we were awarded cash to be used to support vouchers. We can support about 10 vouchers. They are tied to people with intellectual and physical disabilities. And then it's paired with one of our local companies, service as a service provider. And so there will be, once we implement that, 10 new households with that service. We have been working with the county, state, and federal agencies to create identified funding sources. I will tell you that there are two bills in both of the houses that are floating around right now that would bring a form of redevelopment back, that is tax increment financing. They would be geared towards developing affordable housing and reduction of gas house emissions. So infrastructure and affordable housing would be the two eligible projects. Those two, we're keeping a very close eye on, and we've been in touch with both of our local legislators, as well as those sponsoring the bills. And then legislative lobbying, the council did adopt a platform. We are pleased to say that your four items, three of which are state-based, have been picked up by our local legislators. There's a, something about noticing, where there's a sliding scale of 30, 90, and 120 days, depending on the amount of increase of rent. So that would stretch that period of time out for mandatory noticing when there is a rent increase. Assemblymember Friedman has picked that up. There's about $25 million of what we've referred to as stranded redevelopment bonds that are not being used... we've referred to as stranded redevelopment bonds that are not being used. They are sitting in our treasury. We have got the idea, and Senator Portantino has picked this up and run with it, that perhaps legislation that would allow those bonds to be released if they were committed to affordable housing. So if we were able to make this work, we could add another $25 billion almost immediately to our treasury for affordable housing. The landlord property tax rebate reduction, this would be for Section 8 landlords. We hope that it would be enticement enough for them to make their units available for Section 8 tenants. And then finally, on that federal level, capital gains relief for those that sell their property for affordable housing. In terms of dedicated revenue, there were two bills that went to last year, SB 2 and SB 3. One is a $75 per transaction, land transaction fee. That is anticipated to generate about $250 million. It'll be split up among the local jurisdictions. Glendale anticipates about $200,000 of that. SB 3 is a $4 billion bond, $3 billion to local jurisdictions for affordable housing. That was approved by the voters in November, and guidelines for that will be getting underway. We have looked at the impact fee. I talked about that with inclusionary housing, the same in-lufi for affordable housing. That would be if you did not build units, affordable units in your project, you would pay a fee. You could use that for development. We have continued to identify new opportunities, and we are pursuing one of those now. A little bit of repeat, land use tools, inclusionary housing, that zoning is coming back to you late April, May. That would be requiring developers to build a certain percentage of affordable housing into their market rate projects. The South Glendale Community Plan came to you. The environmental impact report was certified. The council asked us to go back and do a little more study, but the idea is to create affordable housing zones where there would be certain incentives to build affordable housing. Staff is working on that and will be bringing that back to you as one of the land use tools. Accessory dwelling units, ADUs, those were approved. We have, I want to say about 250 units that have come through and been approved in little more than the last year or so. About 250. Finally, I wanted to just touch on the governor's proposed housing budget. The, two years ago, it was really perks and revenue for cities. Last year was more about a stick rather than a carrot, forcing cities to do things. This year is a little bit of a mixed bag again, but the governor and his proposed budget has set aside, or asked to set aside, over $7.5 billion for all programs related to affordable housing and homeless and homeless services. That's an increase of $2.5 billion from last year. It looks to address those things. And then finally, the governor has called for what they're terming a housing Marshall Plan, that is a strategy to build 3.5 million new homes by 2025. We are, we are in great need of housing all throughout California. For, over the last decade, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 150,000 to 200,000 units short in our need. And what that is creating that, that classic supply-demand dynamic that we're experiencing here in Glendale and other cities. That completes my update of the affordable housing strategy. Peter Zovak, Assistant Director, is, was here. There he is. And I, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Just a quick question. The Marshall Plan is, is in the works? They're working out the strategy at this point?
It's an idea. And so the governor is, is directing the staff of different agencies, come together and let's put a plan together. So it's an idea. They want to have a plan to go do that.
And the most important part, how they're going to fund it, hasn't been identified yet, right?
No, but my imagine that it would be through several of the programs that the governor has put money towards.
Because the $3.5 million is going to require astronomical amounts of money.
It will. I will tell you that we have gotten word, inkling that the stick is going to come back and that cities are going to be required to build a certain level of housing. The RENA numbers, our regional housing numbers, will tick up in the coming years. And there will be more and more pressure to meet those numbers. Glendale has, has been very good in the program that we told you. I would say we have a robust program. That is the one area, though, our, our affordable housing, very low and low, where we don't quite meet our RENA numbers. None, none of the cities do because it depends on the market saying, we'll go and build affordable housing. I think Mr. Agajanian has commented several times how long it takes to build an affordable housing project. And indeed, that's part of the problem.
Questions?
After, I have a comment afterward, after the, those who want to comment.
Any questions?
Phil, can you comment on the lawsuit against the City of Huntington Beach by the State of California? Is that regarding the RENA number?
I'm going to turn it to Mike.
Sure. So the, as far as I understand it, it does have to do with the housing element. They, the City of Huntington Beach had an approved housing element at one point, and then they amended it to, to remove some of the sites that were zoned for high-density housing, which is used as often as a proxy for affordable housing. They were sued by the Hoover Commission, and they ultimately ended up winning that lawsuit because there is a state law which says if you're a charter city, you don't have to comply with certain provisions of the government code. And that was one of them. So what ended up happening is the legislature then turned around and amended that statute. And then my understanding is that essentially, right out of the gate with the new administration, they brought another lawsuit challenging Huntington Beach's action. And the latest I've heard is that the, the Huntington Beach's legislative representatives in the state legislature are trying to negotiate a settlement between the Attorney General, the Governor's office, and the city to resolve that issue. Huntington Beach was in the process of trying to reamend their housing element to address the issue.
Because there are many cities throughout California that have not met their RENA numbers. Glendale is one city that has done so at great pain and criticism from certain corners of the community. And, you know, good or bad, at least we're, you know, toeing the line and doing what's required to do.
Certainly, with, as Phil mentioned, with our market rate housing, we've certainly met them. It's very difficult to make for the low income without the additional funding source. And what you'll see is very few number of cities have actually met it for that, for that category. And it's usually because their, their RENA number is so low, it's not a very, it wasn't a very difficult number to achieve.
Questions, ma'am?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes. The number of Section 8 vouchers which you mentioned is like 3,000. Does that include the portable ones, the ones that are transferred from other cities as well?
Yes, it does. It includes both. And they're roughly half and half.
Half and half. And also the new construction units, 1,193. The senior housings that we have in the city, the ones like, for example, is owned by the B Group, are those part of this number?
They are part of the, the total number. And that goes from, I think, 1975. Peter's coming with a better history. 1975, when we formed the agency up to today, there are 72 units that are under construction now.
Okay. And the ADUs, the 250 units, is from 2017 until today?
Yes, I believe that the, how, the city council adopted that January, February, 2017.
So do you, do you see this is, this number as a, as a big number? Or, because we thought that the floodgates are open and a lot of people are going to apply for this. And do you think the 250 that units that's proposed is a massive amount of units?
Yeah, you know, about 20, 20 to 30 a month is what we're getting. 20 to 30 permit applications a month.
Good.
So a little over a year, about 250.
All right. Thank you. If it's from 2017, it's almost two years.
2018.
2018. You're right. I'm sorry.
There are no questions at this time. We're going to invite individuals who submitted speaker cards. And we'll start with Mike Gorder, Mike Van Gorder, Mike LaFca, Haik Mahmuriyan, Haik, three minutes, followed by E. Nino.
I forget this. Like, where is the podium? All right, folks. Dear brothers and sisters, I'm a 19-year-old, 19-year-old. I'm a 19-year Glendale resident. And as you know, I fight for basic human right housing protections in Glendale. The very basic is rent control, strong rent control. And I want to say that truth, the direction of history, and the arc of the moral universe, and momentum are all on our side. If you don't come out in favor of strong rent control, your legacy will be remembered in the same breath with the politicians who defended Jim Crow laws in the South. In only 10, 20 years, your friends and relatives may be ashamed to say they know you. Affordable housing strategy, a strong rent control ordinance is foundational to any affordable housing strategy in Glendale. Your city staff showed that in their report, actually. Without it, everything else is so, so short of what needs to be done, it smells of criminal neglect of your most basic responsibilities and accountability. I feel sorry for the landlords who come out here knowingly or unknowingly having to rationalize oppression and exploitation of tens of thousands of people in Glendale. But I have no sympathy for those of you sitting in these chairs until you come out in favor of rent control. Whereas, there is no wall. You have to be either in favor of rent control or you're for exploitation of people in your city, of Armenians, of any kind of people in your city. Until, I got this part already. As I said already, right to lease falls into those ordinances that is far short. It's a three-yard rope, and we're in a 10-yard ditch. Don't throw out that rope, Vartan. We don't need it. We need the basic, the most basic protections. Again, our city actually voted for strong rent control. We want the most basic rent control. You're behind history, Vartan. Throw out that ordinance and vote for the most basic thing you can do for our city, for your residents. Don't be anti-renter. Don't be anti-Armenian. I want to end by saying that I actually want to work with you, but I cannot work with you if you have your foot on my neck, Paula. If you are pushing down, I cannot work with you. We need to work around things that actually provide the basic protections for renters. You cannot talk about panic of the landlords and ignore renters completely. Verdevting voting you from a couple of months ago. And to quote Martin Luther King, whose birthday was this month, and who spoke and fought well against the civil disenfranchisement and economic exploitation you are causing. We want all our rights. We want them here. And we want them now. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to remind the speaker that I am conflicted on the rent control. I will not be voting on it. So I don't know where you're throwing me in terms of criticism in the community. But I do want to point out, it's rather ironic that you see yourself as a fighter for the underprivileged. You're also fighting for the very rich renters who can well afford rent and who are not rent burdened. So you're, you're helping perhaps people that you seem to be fighting against at the same time.
Haik? Please. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Next speaker, E. Nino, followed by Donamo. Nino left. Donamo?
Good evening, city council. I must confess, I'm not familiar with this format. This is my first community meeting. I've been to city council meetings before, and I just want to clarify before I speak whether, if I ask you a question, if you're permitted to answer, or are we, I'll sadly engage in a one-way conversation then. Well, I've spoken before you before regarding rent control and the right to lease ordinance. I'll be speaking again at the February 5 meeting, but I did want to kind of give a preview of my thoughts, primarily regarding the tenant relocation fees. I do see that landlords of buildings constructed after 1995 are exempt, which means that landlords who own buildings constructed before 1995, who have higher maintenance costs and tend to be mom-and-pop landlords, and who cannot afford new or construction, are being unfairly targeted. And we realize this is because, notwithstanding two council members claiming to be against rent control, this really is rent control. It's acknowledged in the staff report, and the staff report advised you to exempt those landlords out of caution. I think the correct response would have been, instead of deciding to not unfairly target mom-and-pops of older properties, by simply declining to impose tenant relocation costs at all, the city council has decided to proceed to impact only pre-1995 landlords. And why not? We're easy targets, and it eases political pressure on the larger landlords who own property after 1995. The draft ordinance says that its purpose is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Glendale, and to ensure that all residents of the city have a safe, habitable, well-maintained, and stable housing environment, which sounds very similar to the purpose of the Measure S funds that are called Glendale Quality of Life and Essential Services Protection Measure. I urge that the city council engage and use Measure S funds to pay for these tenant relocation fees under the ordinance instead of unfairly targeting landlords who own pre-1995 property. I know you feel your hands are tied with Costa Hawkins because of that, but that doesn't mean we should be unfairly targeted. This is for all residents of Glendale, and it should be used by taxpayer money for all, by all the citizens of Glendale.
Thank you, Ms. Mo. And that's the last speaker on this item. I don't know if my colleagues want to say anything or have questions, additional questions for staff? Apparently not. So thank you, Mr. Landsafame, for the report. We are not unique in the state of California facing this housing crisis. And I believe this council is trying really hard to find short-term, medium-term, and long-term resolution to the issue. But some things, the broader picture is beyond our control. The fact that for the last 20, 25 years, the state has failed to build, what's the number, 3.5 million units, is the key factor that's, that's causing the housing crisis today. So we remain, remain committed to finding a resolution. And on Tuesday, next Tuesday, this will be a major item that we'll be discussing. With that, we'll move on to the last item on the agenda, which is public comment. And we have one card from Courtney Morris. Five minutes, Ms. Morris.
Thank you. I don't actually think I will need five minutes unless it, I can't read my own handwriting. Okay, so I, I just wanted to comment. Some of you have been on an email chain with me already this week, so I apologize if this is going to sound redundant to a few of you. I would like to see the city council implement some buffer zones between different residential zones, especially with the South Glendale Community Plan, trop- Tropico abutting the neighborhood of Diamond, which is a moderate-density residential zone, is coming up with some very large developments right along Brand. So you have, you know, single-story homes directly next to 80 units. So I would like to see buffer zones between those. I would also like to see the city consider the current standard as it applies to exemptions to SEQA. When I went to the planning or the design review board, it seemed that it kept getting brought up that all of these other things are already in the works. So this is a very comparable development that we're considering, but SEQA requires that we consider the current standard, not things that are in the works down the line. Even if they're approved, they're not, they're not there. So there's that. And then also, just, you know, in listening to this conversation about affordable housing, I do think it's worth noting that when we are providing exemptions to SEQA to the detriment of the environment for the nearby communities, as an excuse to get more affordable housing, we're basically, we're basically providing density bonuses and exemptions to SEQA to developers when a better solution that wouldn't impact our environment as much would be to enact stricter rent control. And I say that as a landlord in the city of Los Angeles who doesn't have an issue with the rent control policies there. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Do we have any new business, anything you need to report out? You do? Yes. Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to place on the agenda for next week the nomination of Dan Watson to the GWP Commission.
Very well.
We have one more.
We have one more.
Okay, I would like to nominate Henrik Nazarian for Transportation.
I'm going to turn on the microphone.
Okay, I would like to nominate Henrik Nazarian for Transportation Parking Commission.
Thank you, sir. That's been duly noted. And if there's no other additional comments, if we can have a motion to adjourn in the memory of Kim Bongdong.
Sub moved.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.